Please rise for the invocation given this evening by Commissioner Joseph. And please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Dear Lord, help us become better servants to those in need of our help. We ask for our servant's heart to serve those humbly and faithfully. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Ms. Blackshear, may I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Ms. New Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Present.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
May I have a motion then to approve the minutes from the September 24th meeting?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
It's been probably moved in second to approve the minutes from the September 24th meeting. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay. So Ms. Blackshear, we have any communications or petitions?
There are none, Your Honor.
There are none. I know I do have some presentations this evening, and so I'd like to have Mr. Marlon Shakaford and the Youth Peace Ambassadors to the podium to be recognized. Guys, are we looking good? So as they are moving to the front of the commission room, I'd like to ask any of the parents who are here, would you please stand? Any of the parents who are here with these young men? I know we talked to some of them this past Saturday. Got half and half over here. So of course I want to say, and you guys also face me for a moment, the
Turn around.
The impetus of this program, you know, we've been talking a lot about cure violence and how we do the types of things that we need to do to keep the young men and ladies in this city safe. I talked with them about helping to make sure that as we continue to create as many jobs as we can, I need them to stay alive long enough to take those jobs.
Check.
Okay? That means staying out the way of all the crazy things that are happening and being engaged and not just staying out the way, but also learning how to love themselves, care for themselves, learn how to identify and resolve conflict at its lowest level. And then as we pay them to do that, all right?
Check.
Okay? You gotta have some check on that, guys. So as we pay them to do that, putting them in a position where they can teach some of the younger men and young ladies those same sets of skills, because we need every single one of them to be in this space to be able to help us create the conditions for everyone to live, work, play, be educated, raise a family, and go old right here in the city of Dayton. Because I want them to be able to talk and tell some stories of yesteryear, of when they were like in the fifth grade, sixth grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, when they're seventy-five, eighty, and ninety years old. You guys probably not thinking about that at this point in time, but there's some good stories to be told. And then sometimes you don't have a lot of witnesses, so you can maybe tell a fib or two. You can tell people how many home runs you hit, how many bases you stole, all those type of situations. But before we go further, I do want to just sort of bring everyone up to date, is I did talk with my colleagues and told them that we wanted to do this program so that we can put them in a position, them meaning our young people, in a position to do the kinds of things that we're talking about. And they were all in support, understand that. So each one of my colleagues up here, I thank you for your support in terms of making this happen. And also in concert with the city manager as well, so we can find ways of working out the money. I do want to thank my county commissioners and the county because they also shared in this venture as well. And so it was a challenge in terms of making sure that legally we were able to take money from the two different pots and take care of the young people in those spaces as well as the adults who are working with them as well. So again, very special. Of course, you've all seen some of the adult peace ambassadors around this city for many, many years, and to try to find a bench for them as these young men are at this particular point in time. So again, I'll let Mr. Marlon Shakaford, who's been involved in working with the young men and ladies throughout this city for a long, long time, to let him say a few words as well. And then of course, we're going to introduce you young men.
Okay, six most important words.
I apologize, please forgive me.
Five most important words.
We can work this out.
Four most important words.
I will help you.
Three most important words.
I love you.
The two most important words.
Thank you.
The least most important word.
Me.
And the most important word.
We.
We. That's one of the things that we learned that was a human principle that is just so important. First of all, I would like to thank the mayor for this initiative, the city manager who got behind it, and all the commissioners supported this peace initiative. Thank you. Well, we've been doing this for a while. I've done this with over three thousand kids, me and Adina Street Psychology Coach Powell. So this ain't nothing new, right? But finally, we got the support to do it. Peace ambassadors, our motto is we want to live in peace, not rest in peace. We want to live in purpose, we want to live in promise, we want to live in prayer. Yeah, we believe in prayer, right? And so it's just so important that these young men become conflict mediators, and we want to thank, I want to thank my homeboys right here, Official Network and Chill. I want to thank the city leaders, Letta, and also Jonathan who got behind. I know I got on their nerves, they got on my nerves too. That was okay. I mean, who else?
Dayton Mediation.
Dayton, oh Dayton Mediation came out.
Yes.
I think five or six times and did an hour and a half. Give it up for Dayton Mediation. They telling me what to say, y'all. They the boss, not me. The Peace Museum came out and did a training. Give it up for them. Westwood, we brought this piece on our own. Westwood Association, Neighborhood Association got on board. I knew we needed them. I even split my money before we even, give it up for them, all right? So just thank, thank you for believing in us. That's what it comes down. You know, these young people will become the eyes, ears, the feet, and the mouths of our community, and that's why they're so important. You see, some of my street soldiers, what happens when you become an adult, you're a street soldier, but when you're a young person, you're a peace ambassador. And we've proven that the program not only worked here, I did it with Massapee in New Orleans, Lexington, and Louisville. So thank you, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay? Now, you want to, as I know we have a resolution to share with you as well, and to have each one of the young men mentioned, have their names shared with the audience and for those who are watching, okay? Ms. Blackshear, do you want to make those presentations?
You want to come down here and pass them out?
Yes, we'll do that.
Yeah. He did.
Everybody come this way.
Come this way.
Walk this way. Scoot down, gentlemen. Scoot all the way down.
I'll call the name and hand it to you. Okay? Esau Brown. I think, no, don't get, Avriyan Danson. Forgive me if I missed this one, uh, Diir?
Diir.
Diir? Dontre Satterwhite. Okay, Deontay, I'm sorry. Now, who, I see somebody back there. Oh, okay. So that is all, that is all of the.
The mayor wanted me to say how many different schools? Six different schools, give it up.
Hold on, hold on, wait, y'all. Let's get a picture, y'all.
Yeah, get the commissioner, all you guys. All your commissioners want to come down? Okay, a picture taken.
Come right here, actually, come right here. Come on over here. Oh, that way, they what? So they could stand in the background? So they could just stand?
Oh, it's a good idea.
Or y'all want to come up? Yeah. Spread out all the way over. Keep going, they gonna want to keep going. Now, y'all, there, please. More, y'all, slide it going. Am I, keep going, go over. Oh, keep going, this way, that way. Y'all know that one. When you ten on one side, let it on the other.
It's a lot easier that way.
Yeah, it is. Easy money, y'all, easy money. You guys stand?
Yeah.
Hold on, wait, sit that way. You good?
Hold on, just, hold on a second.
No, wait. Stick up for peace, y'all. Stick up for peace. Stick up for peace.
Okay, as I spoke about the county, first of all, let's give them a nice round of applause again. Spoke about the county, so we did, like I mentioned, in partnership, so I'd like to thank the county commissioners. Of course, Mayor McDowell's here, as you come up, because she wanted to say a couple of words to us as well, okay? Also Judy Dodge and Carolyn Rice and Michael Colbert and Marveen Mitchell, who all worked with us to make this thing become a reality. So a lot of work and a lot of partnership and all those things that made this happen. Yes, ma'am, thank you for being here.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. I'm so happy to be here and so happy to be here on a night when I see young men such as these doing great things in the community, and I again applaud each and every one of It is such an honor to be here and to join you all tonight. I'm here simply to say hello. I've been making my way through the county, and people have said, especially where I live in Trotwood, we haven't seen you. I said, because the county is a huge place. It's from, let's see, Vendetta all the way to Austin Landing, and that's with thirty-three townships and cities, and we have made it our business throughout our first year to get through to each council to be able to say hello and to introduce ourselves and let you know that we are here for you in any way possible. After having spent eighteen years in the city of Trotwood, eight of which as the mayor, I understand many of the challenges that cities and commissions and council members are saddled with these days. I know there is a lot going on, but what I do know is we are resilient people, and we will continue to work hard at making a difference in the lives of people. So I know the work that you all are doing. We have definitely been partners over the years, and we'll continue to do the same thing as county commissioner. I'm excited to be the first African-American county commissioner in Montgomery County. And I say what's important about that is having a voice at the table of individuals that share in the various likeness and unlikeness that we all share. That's what makes a difference in the decision-making that we make together. So I just wanted to say hello and to drop off a couple of documents with you. Our 2025 State of the County Impact Report, I'll leave with your clerk, as well as we are all working really hard to make sure that we pass our Human Services Levy. It is extremely important for the needs of our community, and we definitely would appreciate your support as we move this forward. So I'm excited again to be with each and every one of you tonight and very excited to see these young people and all the citizens that are here joining me. Thank you so much, and I'll take any questions that you might have.
Any questions? No, just thank you. I know we were at the meeting yesterday, we talked about the Human Services Levy.
Yes.
So of course, you know, we took a vote last week to be in total support of that, and anything that you need us to do, because we know it's important, we will certainly be happy to do so. I know Commissioner Shaw is on the Human Services Board.
Yes.
I have served on that board in the past, and we all work together to make good things happen as far as the whole county is concerned. So again, thank you guys so much for what you're doing.
No, thank you all again. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We getting an opportunity to talk to these young men. I didn't, I'm sure all of us would like to say a word or two, if that'd be okay in order.
You, yeah, you guys have to leave because I think they were moving, sir. You can go ahead and say something.
Oh, well.
Because I know they're
Can you pause a minute for each of us to say something to the guys? Yeah.
Very briefly, because I know you all have other engagements, but I would just like to
Yeah, Commissioner Turner Sloss. Go ahead.
Thank you all for being here this evening. Thank you for your leadership to the street soldiers, to the Network and Chill, to Marlon Shakaford, all of the many players that had a stake in this endeavor. And so I wanted to thank my colleagues, the county commissioners, as well as Marveen Mitchell, Michael Colbert, the list goes on and on. Thank you very much. So let me just impart this on to you all, young men. So the tools and the resources that you've been able to gain over the last, what, six, eight weeks, I believe, please make sure that you keep them in your toolbox, if you will. It doesn't start or stop now. Make sure that you continue on to utilize those skill sets as you matriculate throughout the various endeavors in your life, whether it's in school, as you become a young adult, become an adult, become a parent, become all of these different milestones in your life. Use those tools because they are in fact, or going to have to be practiced. So nonetheless, pass it on to your colleagues or your friends, your peers rather, I should say, your siblings, your cousins, your aunts, your uncles, again, even some adults. We're all learning. So again, I just want to thank you all. Thank you for just having the will, the will and the passion and just having the insight to be want, to wanting to be a part of such a very impactful program. So continue on. I hope that we can continue the program on, not just for the summer months, but again, the school year and then after. So is it, will there be a continuation of the program?
Yeah, we're working on different things to make this happen.
All right, well, anything
We have the Youth Development Peace that is part of the whole peace initiative, so we'll work some things out in that process.
Absolutely.
I will make sure the boy remember.
Yeah, yeah. There you go. I think I stole the ball from one young man, made a shot.
Okay. All right.
Right. Thank you.
All right. So Commissioner Fairchild?
Yeah. So I think I heard that one of your phrases is living in prayer, and my day job, I'm the chaplain over at Dayton Children's Hospital, where I get to pray and bless patients and families. So tonight, I'd simply like to give you a blessing. You are sons of God.
Amen.
You are precious, you're beloved, you're beautiful to behold. May you always know God's love and grace. Amen.
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 Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, and thank you for that, especially Commissioner Fairchild, but I just want to say thank you to all of you. I don't know that you could know how impactful your service is to this community. A voice that's been missing in all these conversations has been our young people, and I'm just so glad that you're willing to spend your time and your effort in solving these very serious issues that we have in our community that is violence. So again, just thank you so very much for giving back to us, and whatever we can do to support you, know that you are supported by at least this body, but many, 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 many others around this community. So thanks again very much, and just look forward to the great things that you all will continue to do in our community. Thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Joseph?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for stepping up. It's important, as commissioners have said, it's important for the community. But I'm going to say something else, I think it's important for you all, too. I think you're going to look back and think, you're going to look back and say, this was a good decision. And because good decisions have a way of snowballing. You start down the path of good decisions, you kind of get used to it, you keep making more good decisions. So I think joining up these guys, joining up with Shaq, joining up these new friends, I think you're going to look back and say it was good for you, as well as great for the community. So thank you for taking this first step. Appreciate it.
Of course, you've seen from me and heard from me, and I also explained to you that one of the reasons why we picked the Westwood neighborhood, as we looked at police data, we see that we have some challenges as far as that community is concerned, and you are going to be the change agents to help us move that community into the right direction. So again, thank you all so much for what you've done, and also thank you for what you're going to do, all right? Have a good day.
Thank you, Mayor.
So you think for that, Commissioner Fairchild?
That was a good idea.
So Mr. Steve Gondal, I know you're here just waiting for the opportunity to share with us all the good things that's happening throughout the community in terms of demolition and fire piles and all those things associated with that, to make Dayton beautiful. You got a hard act to follow.
I know.
Normally you are hit, you're the star.
Usually.
Yes, sir.
Look at the scheduler, speaking of, I was trying to be articulate here as I'm at the tail end of a cold, and I didn't want to get our esteemed clerk here sick and be to blame for that. But Mayor, Commissioners, Deputy City Manager, Clerk, thank you for having me tonight. Steve Gondal, Director for the Department of Planning, Neighbors, and Development, with your monthly demolition update for the month of August 2025. All right, we had a really strong month in August. We had thirty demolitions, all under the ARPA contract. That brings us up to one hundred and ninety demolitions for the year 2025. So really good pace. We're going to talk a little bit about where those occurred, types of demolitions that occurred, but again, really proud of the team for just meeting that sheer number of We started July with fifty-four piles. We were able to remove eight in August. We were fortunate, we had none added in August. And again, this is now probably the second month, I think, in 2025, we've not had additional structures added to that list, which is a really, again, trying to get caught up. That's a good number. So we ended August with forty-six piles. So just so I didn't forget, I wanted to kind of call it out there that we had no emergency demolitions in August. The thirty demolitions that we did occur, you'll see the bulk of those are in Southern Dayton View and in the Santa Clara area with a few others sprinkled throughout, but that was the bulk of that work. And then again, over the, this is what, one hundred and ninety demolitions within the city, plus the ones that we do with our partners at the land bank just over the city lines out in Harrison, Jefferson, and Trotwood area. So staff completed well more than that, contributing to removal of blight within the city and our adjacent communities. We had six structures added to the structural nuisance list, and I want to give you some background on that. Four of those were houses, two of those were garages. Four of them were due to fire, two were actually from blight. So again, this is something that we're tracking as to try to get a clearer idea of that list as to how many are houses or garages and what's that percentage related to fire and/or just blight or some other kind of structural deficiency. Our pipeline, we continue to kind of prepare the next round of demolitions, twenty-three title reports prepared for the month, eleven asbestos surveys, ten remediations. So again, with those ten remediations, those then tee up for immediate removal while the other ones work their way through that process. So we're on, again, a steady pace of work for the next few months. Our before and afters, we take you on the, so 2101 East Fourth, that was actually a series of properties that we removed. Those about actually four different probably addresses or lots that we cleared, and then Seventy Drummer, another pile. Most, all that you're going to see here is piles. So again, completing that ODOD work, we're back onto our pile contract, so that's what you're going to see tonight. These are almost all piles that I'm showing you tonight. We still have some routine house demolitions, but we're back into that dual path of house demolitions and the pile removals. Thirty-one, thirty-three North McGee and Thirty McKinley, also again, just kind of taking care of some of these standing piles. As I look at where we are on this, like this, on the focus of these piles, so as we look at the broader contract of, I think, fifty piles, we break that into smaller contract or NOPs, so that way as the contractors complete it, we can pay them and they can move on. So much of what you're seeing now is on like a fourth contract, so we're moving into our fifth and sixth ones throughout the remainder of the year. So again, slight setback with when we focused on ODOD, but right back on track and getting back through these, that pile contract that we had approved about a year ago. Well, coming up in December, so. All in all, really good work, and at that point, I will glad to take any questions you and the commission might have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Turner Sloss, any questions or comments?
I do, yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gondal, and I hope speedy recovery to you.
Yeah, thank you.
Hope you feel better soon. Couple of questions. The first is, so the fire piles that you have noted, that I know we had to go and address ODOD, the demolitions from ODOD, so we approved a contract and agreement back in December of twenty-four, right? So where are we now with that contract? And I believe we asked for an assessment, or if you could give us an update on that contract. I know that there was some delays in rebidding that contract, and so if you could give us an idea as to where we are, because there were a number of fire piles that were listed on that
Yep.
Original agreement.
Yeah, that's what I was just saying, that I think we're, we broke that into maybe six, like smaller NOPs or contracts, and like I said, this work that you're seeing here, it was on the fourth one, and so we have the fifth and sixth to come, and there's about, that's about twenty remaining properties. So I'd say we're probably about halfway or more than halfway. We're probably about thirty of, thirty of those fifty are done. I will give that updated list to the city manager's office to get back to all of you as to of that contract, which ones have been completed, which ones are either underway, and then which ones are scheduled to come before the year ends.
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay.
Because I think two of my problem children are on that list. Fernwood, one that I've been
That's next, yeah, I checked that. That's next, yeah, I checked that today.
Very good. You said that's next and the next batch.
That was on the, because I know, I was thinking about you and Commissioner Joseph, because I think we sat on the gentleman's porch at 31 South McGee. And that one has been removed. And then I know Fernwood is on, if we're on the fourth, I think that's on the fifth or sixth contract, NLP. So keep an eye on both of those. But I will give a full update of the whole contract and status of completed and then scheduled.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then the last one, I just want to make mention to it. I know that you mentioned that the, the various different batches that we have in the queue, like Great Miami Boulevard, the fire pile that we have there on Great Miami Boulevard. So I appreciate the update. I look forward to that comprehensive assessment, if you will, from what we've been able to accomplish thus far. Thank you.
Thank you.
You good?
Yes, and please.
Commissioner Fairchild?
And our gratitude to the entire.
Always do, thank you very much.
Yeah, congratulations, thank you for your team, thank you for the report. It's always helpful to see the progress we're making. Congratulations on no fire piles and bringing eight down. I mean, I think first time we've been under 50 fire piles remaining.
Yeah.
That's what's striking.
We struggle to kind of, you know, we dip down, we jump back up to 100, and to see, again, a number of factors convening there. It's, it's helping us get toward that goal.
And just hope as we come to the cold weather and, you know, some of our folks go inside and start having fires to stay warm, that we can somehow prevent all that again. So, but thank you for the work, thank you for your team's work. I was curious, related, not part of this presentation, but related, the comprehensive housing survey, when, when do we cycle back to do that again?
Yeah, great question. So just sat in on a training session yesterday. James McDaniel, our Division Manager, led that with his supervisors. So that is actually kicking off here pretty much this month. And so, yeah, it's a fall thing. So we're going to do that in October and November.
All right.
We're going to spare them December. Hopefully, we're, well, hopefully, we'll get it done in the fall months versus the start of the winter months.
Sure, it's a lot easier to do it when the leaves are off the trees.
Well, that's, that's actually was the discussion, somebody, one of the new inspectors asked about when, why are we starting? It's like, we're waiting for the leaves to fall off. It's easier with the vegetation down to get a full perspective of a house, so.
And when, when can we expect the report to come?
I will look with, we're working with GIS, we're working with MMB. So we're trying some new strategies to speed that up. So if we're going to conduct that survey in October, November, figuring out the time then to basically update the portal. So probably working with the City Manager's Office on a, probably a delivery date. I think our goal is probably first quarter of '26.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
You good? Commissioner Shaw?
Yeah, so likewise, thank you, and thank you to the staff. Really appreciated the work that you did in Westwood, Alley Cleanup says, there are some older ladies that have really been going through it and advocating for their neighborhood, and, and you all got out there and, and did that work right away. So I just want to thank you from them, and also me. But, but now my colleagues ask a lot of good questions, and, and I just appreciate the work, and look forward to any other updates that we're going to get from you all in the future.
Well, thank you. And we have more work to come in Westwood with our CDBG contracted demos, which will come at the end of ARPA. And again, we targeted those half in Westwood, half in Burkhardt. So we have more to do in Westwood.
Terrific.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Joseph?
Thank you, Mr. Gondal. I want to thank you particularly for the 31 McGee. You and I sat on the porch and talked to this family. This is a family that moved in from the suburbs about a decade ago, was dedicated to making things better for people. They mentor the kids, they take care of folks, they feed people, they hold their neighbors' hands, they walk them through everything. They're the, the rock on this block, probably a couple of blocks at this point. And they asked us to look at this, it's probably been a couple of years now. These things take time, and I really appreciate your attention to that on their behalf. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, my colleagues have said it all. Thank you so much for the great work that you're doing. And just keep it up.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Sybil Martin, who's working with the Ross Motor Cars and the whole. Yeah, that whole foundation with Norma Ross and the family, the great work that you're doing in women's breast cancer, and also men's breast cancer as well. Good evening.
Good evening. First, I want to say, I want to do that theme.
You so?
Yeah, I want to do that, tap on somebody. I think that is so beautiful. Thank you so much for having me today. My name is Sybil Martin. I am the Executive Director of the Norma J. Ross Memorial Foundation. And Mayor Mams and his team reached out to me and asked me to come down and let's kick off Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So we all see the pink, we all participate during the month of October, but I want you to know, breast health is a 365 thing. It is a nonstop, breast cancer doesn't care if it's October or if it's April. So we want to make sure that people have the information that they need in order to be advocates for themselves, to also put themselves in a position for early detection and things like that. So we want people to really know and understand that one in eight women are diagnosed every year. And this year, they expect nearly 317,000 women to be diagnosed and about 2,800 men. You know, we forget about the men sometimes, but you have that tissue, too. So we want to make sure that you're staying ahead of, of this by one, getting your mammograms. And we do offer mammograms all year long. And this month, we will have them October the 11th at the Breast Cancer Awareness Walk. So this is, funny enough, this is the first time that they're actually going to be doing screenings at the walk. And my foundation, our foundation advocated for that because it really didn't make sense for the mammogram unit to be there, and people could just come on and look at it. So now you can actually get a mammogram screening at the walk. We do encourage people to call us and get an appointment scheduled in advance, and I'll leave some information out on the table. And then we're also going to do screenings on October the 25th at Revival Center Ministries. So we're always doing them at least once to twice a year, or about a month, I'm sorry. We do them all year long. In between all that, we are going to host our first community-wide education event. So we are calling it B365, which means Breast Health Empowerment Education and Encouragement 365 Days a Year. So we have some experts coming in, some different healthcare professionals, some survivors, some survivors who are healthcare professionals. So we have a gambit of people that are there to offer wisdom, answer questions, to share, to love on one another, to encourage, and to let everybody know, we're here all year long. It's free and open to the public. We will host that at Sinclair. I'll leave the flyer out on the table there. But we just want people to know that this is a time to really think about it, but also to carry it with you to next October. This year, we did share the story of two men at our golf outing that had been diagnosed with breast cancer. One was NFL legend, Ernie Green. He had been diagnosed with breast cancer, and he found his own lump. Another gentleman came all the way down from New Albany, Ohio, up by Columbus, and shared his story with us. So, man, we want you to know that the forum that we have coming up on the 18th is for you guys, too. Stop in, learn what you can learn, ask the questions you need to ask, and we're here. And so from a prevention standpoint, let me just say this. Watch your weight, you hear that with everything. Watch your consumption of alcohol, no smoking, of course. Make sure you have a diet rich in fruits and vegetables, along with that steak that you're having. You know, sometimes it helps to have a little broccoli or something next. So I'm looking at all these men who are probably meat eaters, because I know mine is, so. But make sure you're doing that, and you're also exercising. There are so many things that we can do to help ourselves, and we just fall short. So just think about it. Think, get out and walk. You know, do some sit-ups, or just get one of those little things under your desk and you pedal. You know, just keep moving in some way, shape, form, or fashion. So let's get started. What's Shaq say? Give it up for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Give it up, we're going to go out there and do our, do our absolute best. So if you have any questions for me?
Okay, questions, Commissioner? Commissioner Charles Sloss?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for being here. Is Ms. Sybil Martin, is it Martin?
Yes.
Thank you, okay. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you for being here. I know you've came to visit us in the past, and so we really appreciate all of your leadership. And if you could just leave us the informations and let us know how we can be of further support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Fairchild?
Thank you for your time tonight, and thank you for the service to our community. So thank you.
Likewise, Sybil, thank you for always being here and for your great advocacy. And thanks, thanks to Janelle also for being such a great champion in this space over the years. You know, my family has been affected by breast cancer, as you know. And my mother passed not, not long, in the same, within a couple of months of Norma. So really impressed and so happy that, that she and the foundation has taken on this effort. It's making a difference, and just want to thank you for that.
Okay, Commissioner Joseph?
My colleagues have said it all, thank you for doing what you do.
Thank you. You know, and I did forget one thing, how did I forget this? So this year marks 15 years. So 15 years in honoring the legacy of Mrs. Norma Ross, but also 15 years of the organization. So we definitely want to just continue to honor her legacy and do as much as we can for this community, because I know she did a whole lot, maybe not in this space, but in a whole lot of other spaces. So we want to honor that.
You know, I've overheard some conversations with individuals who are trying to talk Janelle into giving this up, but I notice a really strong, strong passion of hers, and that she wants to do everything she can to help both the, the women and the men who may be affected by this, by this disease. So again, hats off to her, and I wish you continue to do what she wants to do as long as she wants to.
Absolutely.
How's that?
That's wonderful.
Thank you so much, appreciate you. So calendar items, Ms. Blackshear, are there any additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
Mayor, Commissioners, I would like to request the addition of legislation pertaining to our public hearing at the desire of the commission.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Parlet, any additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
Your Honor, I have no additions or deletions, but I do have a few items to highlight, not small amounts of money in these projects. B2 is to rehabilitate taxiway W, first phase of three. So this taxiway was actually closed when Emory left. So this will make that available again at some point. Also, with aviation, seems to be a theme today. Access road at the South Airport. We've experienced more demand than there is supply for hangars. So that's what we'll be doing eventually down at Dayton Wright Brothers. A very important project for our water department in building a data center. This is really focused on providing redundancy for our SCADA system that we control our various plants. Water's really done an exceptional job in terms of providing redundancy for the power. We've done that with generator power at the plants. But this one will help us back up our SCADA system. And finally, very exciting news, also at the airport. We will, for the first time in quite some time, have a new concession agreement. Tailwind operates in about 60 or so mid-sized, largely mid-sized airports. They will be bringing updated brands, updated looks. Very, very exciting change at the airport. So with that, that's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, so Blackshear, before we go to the Commissioners with questions or, or comments, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak?
None on calendar.
None on calendar?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Charles Sloss, questions on City Manager's recommendations?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Parlet, for speaking and highlighting the number of, of items as it relates to the, the airport, and just would like to uplift the, the leadership and all of the staff, Mr. Gil Turner, and again, and the supporting staff for the work that's being done. Just a quick question and to make recognition, if you will, or connection to what is being done with our demolition efforts and what Mr. Gondal spoke to in the additional work in Westwood. So my question is pertaining to calendar item number five. So these particular properties, the vacant properties, the 107 properties that have been identified for the removal of the brush and vegetation, I take it that these properties are not slated for demolition, right? These are properties that are probably the threes, the twos or the threes? Okay, very good, thank you. Again, just kudos to our Department of Planning and Community Development, Neighborhood Development, Community Development. I think the name changed.
PND.
All right, PND, Neighborhood Development. All right, very good, I'm used to Community Development, nonetheless. Thank you to the staff, as well as uplifting the work of our airport staff, Aviation Department. That's all I have, thank you.
Good, okay. Commissioner Fairchild?
No, I'm good.
You're good?
No, I just wanted to comment on that same one. Item number three had a 75% DVE goal that was achieved, so that's remarkable and good. So thanks for that.
Commissioner Joseph? Okay, you're good? Okay. So accept the motion then to approve the City Manager's recommendations?
Make a motion to approve the City Manager's recommendation?
Second motion, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the City Manager's recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay. So we have both moved and seconded that, so we do have the public hearing. So, Mr. Parlet, are you open to the public hearing?
Yes, I'll ask Kirsten French, our zoning administrator, to come forward. Kirsten and the zoning team have worked extremely hard on this for quite some time now. I give them all the credit in the world and kudos for the methods and the manner in which they went about this, the transparency, the openness, very thoughtful leadership in this space for the state. We've got other cities calling us, asking what we're doing. So Kirsten?
Thank you very much, that was a very nice introduction. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
Evening.
Appreciate you having me here. This is going to be kind of a lot of information, plenty of time for questions at the end, of course, or throughout. We are here to consider the City Plan Board case PLN 2025-00184 tonight, which is an amendment to our zoning code addressing group homes. I'm going to start from the top. I'm going to go through a little bit of the distinguishing features of group homes, and then talk about how we got here, and then talk about what we're doing, the timeline that we're on, and the content of the ordinance change. So a group home is a residential dwelling that provides housing, care, and support to people who need additional supervision and social support. They are also called residential facilities. Those terms are completely interchangeable. A group home's model typically is that an operator or an owner of a business leases or purchases a property. They get a license from the state to operate a group home. They're able to get referrals from agencies for people to live in the group home based on that license. They hire a staff. The staff provides supervision 24 hours a day, usually eight-hour shifts, three, three staff members, something like that. And they take place, they're called residential facilities, but they take place in houses in our neighborhoods. There are three main types of group homes that we see. By agency, we have the Department of Youth issuing licenses for children and foster care up to age 21. Mental Health, Ohio Mental Health and Addiction Services, OMS, issues licenses for addiction recovery and mental and behavioral health residential facilities. And then we have the Department of Developmental Disabilities issuing licenses for those with developmental disabilities. Notable on the side here, each of these different types of homes is governed by a different Ohio Revised Code section. They are all called residential facilities, but they have different guidance, different laws that you have to follow. It's incredibly confusing, it's something that we want to address with the state. And we also have to keep in mind that we're layering these complexities with fair housing law at the federal level. And so we're having to thread the needle and create just the right balance while addressing reality of the situation that we are in in Dayton. So this is a map from our partners at Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, MVRPC. Our Deputy Director, Emily Crowe, came from Harrison Township. They are experiencing some of the same issues with a lot of foster care group homes. So we reached out to MVRPC and started a partnership. We are now hosting a long speaker series with professionals in our area, but they have also created this nice tool where they've gathered data from the state, and they've created tools so we can see that data alongside other important data to make decisions. So what you're looking at here, from a zoomed-out perspective, is just the number of youth group homes, which is our particular issue in our community per capita. So you got that dark orange because we have the highest concentration of youth group homes in the state. Same, we've got a heat map of our group homes in the area now mapped over census data, percentage of households in poverty. So homes have just so happened to open in areas with higher poverty. Homes have just so happened to open in areas with higher housing vacancy. These are things to note. And if you look, zoom out, that's not the case when you, you're going to our suburban peers. It's not the case when we go to other cities. Here is a look at our homes. a look at our homes. This is DYS data, just showing on their map. And at the same zoom level, we're looking at Columbus. Notable, our population in Montgomery County is 537,000. You have 1.3 million in Franklin County. And look at the number of youth group homes that they have open. I mean, and you can picture the resources that are there in a growing city like that and where youth group homes are opening. Our next most correlated city or the most concentrated city is Lucas County, hosting in Toledo, of course. And they have roughly one-third of the group homes that we have here for youth. So that's, we are way outsized. We're not just a little bit outsized. We're way outsized in concentration. This is our data mapped over our land use geographies, and we'll get into why that was important for decision-making. And zooming in, looking at the actual level in neighborhoods, I wanted to point out that most group homes, whether they're for youth or for sober living or for some other purpose, are fine. They are well-kept, well-maintained homes, and you wouldn't notice that they're there. And we are here to craft regulations for those that are slipping through the cracks, and the cracks are way too big in our city. So some examples, we had a home open here. This is Fairview, and the operator called a few months later and said, hey, I'd really like to be able to move my home because I wasn't thinking about the vacant boarded house next door. When I opened this home, and it's become a real problem for us. We care about this in our line of work with inspections because these homes do have trouble getting homeowners' insurance because of the fire risk. And so we don't want to introduce people in vulnerable situations to places that are higher risk for any reason, let alone people who are being funded by taxpayer dollars to get help and support. This is one of my least favorite examples, but the one to share. This was a home where there was a duplex, or this is a duplex that we're looking at. We had an operator who had, on the advice of their consultant, who helps people open group homes, leased one half of this duplex. The other half of the duplex, I mean, you can see some of the property maintenance issues just on its face, but the other half of the duplex is boarded. The house to the left is boarded. The house to the right is boarded. The house across the street is boarded. The other house across the street should be boarded. So we are, we were luckily able to deny this based on the Fire Marshal's recommendation because of the duplex status. But had this just been a single-family house, we may not have had a leg to stand on all the surrounding issues. So this is something that we want to keep bringing up to the state. The licensing agency should also pay attention to the surrounding, outside of the property lines of the house that they're looking at. They should be looking at the surrounding conditions as well and not leaving it to a patchwork of local jurisdictions to try to figure out these issues. Another example of a house next to another boarded house, another example of a proposed home next to some boarded homes. So you get the picture that it's not, it's not the majority of homes, but it's the ones that are, that do seem like the wrong fit for people who are coming to live in these homes. And that is something I'd like to stress, these regulations. We care about fair housing. We care about people being provided with quality, safe housing and enough housing, but we also want to make sure that the motives of an operator who are opening a home are well-aligned with the needs of the people who will live there later because they are the most vulnerable, vulnerable population involved in this equation. We started along this path in part because we had educational service providers, our schools, saying that we had a lot of children who were in foster care inundating the schools because you can have up to five children in each of these homes most often, and we have many, many, many homes in the same school district. But we also had call for action from our emergency services who are receiving many, many calls for missing people because, of course, there's a mandatory reporting requirement. So this, these are some of the stats, just year-to-date this year. This is still an issue. It will continue to be an issue, and we have more work to do on the ongoing support that we are giving to the homes that are open now. Onto our timeline and our engagement process and what we've been doing. This is just a picture from yesterday's MVRPC gathering of professionals. Prior to this timeline starting, we had a lot of discussion, and at some point, it was a smart idea. May 30th, the group home providers meeting was kicked off here in this room. Many of the, I'd say several dozen providers showed up. It was well-attended. August 14th, of course, we're starting to talk about it, so we started in my office getting flooded with more calls and more applications. So it's time to pass a moratorium to prevent more applications from coming under old rules that we already recognized were a problem. So we passed the first moratorium. We started drafting, researching, drafting again, researching, drafting again, and then held a work session with the plan board on December 10th. The moratorium got extended in February of this year. We hosted our first session on April 28th of this year with MVRPC. We had a second meeting with the group home providers at the Northwest Library Branch, and this was, this was a really good opportunity because we actually had a draft to present. We had information about the content of what we're doing here for the providers, and generally speaking, the feedback was this, "Sounds like pretty common sense rules." What, how does this pertain to my particular situation? And we would like more support, ongoing support for the homes that are already open." Those were the main concerns, and they, by and large, were not concerned with the content of this draft, which was good news for us. We held another public information session on June 30th for the general public, and then on July 8th, the plan board recommended the text that's in front of you today. The moratorium got extended for some more comments. We received comments from Miami Valley Fair Housing and responded to those as well. Just yesterday, we hosted our second session, and today we are here to review the content of that draft. So to summarize our current state in our zoning code right now, we have a single definition, residential facility. We've got basically one standard, which is that you cannot open more than one residential facility on a single parcel. Other than that, not much. There's not, there's not really much, other than it's permitted in these districts. You can have up to eight, which has become a point of conflict because the fire code would say you're commercial over six people in a house, and eight people is kind of a lot of people in some, in some of our homes. So here are our proposed changes. So we're going to have, you'll see some reworking of definitions going on in our zoning code to accommodate the shift, but we will have two definitions. One, group home supportive care. One, group home foster care. The supportive care covers the OMAS licensed homes and the Department of Developmental Disabilities licensed homes. The foster care, of course, deals with the Department of Youth Services homes. We are proposing thousand-foot separation between group homes of any type. There are exceptions that can be drawn for reasonable accommodation, for geographic barriers that are maybe more significant than distance, like the river or a creek or something like that. We are proposing a maximum number of foster care group homes, and I'll have a map to show you how this overlays within each land use planning geography. So the maximum that we came down to is 12. I can give you specifics on how we got to that number if you need. Right now, the west and north-central land use geographies are full, according to this measure. There should be no more foster care group homes open in those two geographies. Because the state has updated their, the higher revised code on foster care group homes, they have referenced conditional uses with those, and we have already been inundated with foster care group homes, so they will become conditional uses here, meaning they will be required to get BCA approval for, to open a new home. We're proposing that no permits will be issued on homes that have, on blocks that have homes within a public nuisance program, or boarded, vacant. We want to push homes to where they are best suited, where they're going to give the, the people who will live there the best chance at having a good quality life. We are proposing operation from single-family homes with some exceptions, campus arrangements through planned developments. We are making a distinction between Class 1, 2, and 3 facilities from the OMAS category. Class 2 facilities go in neighborhoods. Class 1 facilities are protective care. Class 3 facilities are more like boarding houses. This is not clear when you read any codes right now. We are proposing caps at five or fewer. We're, we're basically saying, the state tells us the minimum we have to require, and we're saying that is also the maximum we will allow. So five for OMAS homes, five for foster care homes, and it has to be six for DoDD homes, so we will have it that way. All new homes, we have already started exterior property maintenance inspections on new homes and just kind of stepped up our efforts on, on this subject, but all new homes, according to the ordinance, will have interior and exterior property maintenance inspections. They already receive fire inspections. This layers on top of that. The state, of course, does do an inspection as well, but we just, we've seen inconsistent quality. We want, we want consistent quality of new homes. We also just clarified that the information submitted to us at the outset of a licensed facility coming here remains updated. If you sell the home to another provider, we want their information and their plans as well. So I wanted to just show you that cap. So these are our land use areas, geographies here, split by the river and some major roads. Here are our current foster care group home numbers within those geographies. So we've got the most huge concentration in north-central, of course, with 37, 21 in our west geography, four in the northeast, and then downtown and southeast combined, and this is how we're, we're doing this. Don't have any currently. We're proposing a maximum of 12 for each. Of course, you know that the others are exceeded. This ordinance has nothing to do with any homes that have already opened. We are not going around to close homes, of course. All right. And your options this evening are to, are in front of you, and if you'd like to review those, but I'm sure you have some questions.
Sure. So, Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are wishing to speak on the group home?
We have one, one citizen who has registered.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. I would like to state that there is a three-minute time limit. As you address the commission, we ask that you state your name and address for the record. At that time, I will turn on the green light. When the green light comes on, you will have three minutes to speak. After you have spoken two and a half minutes, a yellow light will come on. You will have 30 seconds remaining to speak. When the red light comes on, you will be asked to cease your comments and to take your seat. To the audience in attendance, please be mindful, this is a business meeting, and we kindly request that during this portion of the meeting, you refrain from any hand clapping, finger snapping, and conversations that will prevent the City Commission from hearing the speaker's comments. I call to the podium Mark Mantovich.
Good evening. Hello.
Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name's Mark Mantovich. My name and address is 529 Hickory Street, Dayton, Ohio, 45410. That's in the South Park neighborhood. I'm a member of the Downtown Land Use Board, sorry if you can hear me. So I had attended a number of work sessions on this zoning, the text changes for the proposed zoning text amendments. While the text amendments sound like they're minor grammatical changes, the changes for you, anything but minor, I'd like to offer some substantive changes. We're not necessarily against them, but we'd like to talk about some of the issues that we see that aren't totally addressed. First, our understanding is the changes allow supportive care homes, including addiction recovery, as Kirsten said, to open as a permitted use in any Dayton single-family zone neighborhood without notice to the neighbors. These homes are currently not permitted uses and require additional use variances with neighborhood notification and public hearings. I guess our question would be to confirm whether that's true or not, is the neighborhood going to be made aware of these prior to they're getting accepted or they're being implemented? Second, this is a major change that should be made public in a significant way, and as I said, it was discussed somewhat, but I don't know that the, the general public is made totally aware of this, and I would want to make sure that that, that they are because it does have a significant impact on neighborhoods. Next, our main concern is we are concerned about the saturation issue, which we've seen with the foster homes, and we want to make sure that that doesn't become a similar issue with the supportive care homes. We haven't seen any suggestion that there's a limitation on those supportive care homes per neighborhood, and I was wondering if we've seen the issue with, with the foster care homes become a problem, why aren't we addressing that upfront rather than reacting to that as it becomes a problem later on? We all know it's harder to correct an issue than to face it upfront and address it. And I guess I, my question is, why have we not? We're also concerned about the 1,000-feet requirement. That's basically every block. You could have one of these homes, and as we've seen, it goes back to our saturation concern, where, you know, one or two of these in a neighborhood are fine. If you end up with having like 37 in, in the west district, that, that's going to be an issue in any other neighborhood in all of Dayton. Finally, let's see, we, we would like to see staff limit supportive care homes by land use geography, just like they did with foster care. Okay, 30 seconds. Once open, there's, we're concerned about continuing oversight. While there might be oversight to open them, we've seen with other issues that, once opened, there's no oversight going on afterwards. So we would like to see staff address and outline how supportive care homes can be closed when they become problematic to a neighborhood. I don't see that being addressed at all. So, thank you very much. These text amendments have been drafted. You know, we understand the cleaning up of the zoning code. That's it. Thank you.
Please leave your comments.
Thank you.
Oh, they're kind of messy, so I'll send them to you later.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
That concludes the speakers, Your Honor.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, questions? I know this has been an issue, as was mentioned, that has been, I don't say it snuck upon us, but that, I guess, oversaturation of the number of homes that we have within a certain geographical area. And though we have no authority to close any of the group homes, we have no authority to approve. All those rights and privileges rest with the state of Ohio. And so the aspect of how we work into these spaces to find the best way, by calling the meetings, to address concerns, listen to citizens, also listen to a lot of group home owners who were very responsive in terms of trying to find ways to address this concern because they did not want to be a nuisance in, in our community as well. So again, a lot of work has gone into this for, you know, more than a year or so or longer. Again, the aspect of how we find better ways of improving the integrity of the neighborhoods, even as they had multiple group homes in those spaces as well. I know one of the major problems that we had was the aspect of having many of those individuals' group homes who had young people who were leaving, sometimes going back to their home county. As we mentioned, we have some 75 or 76 group homes here in the Montgomery County, the Dayton area. And as they did what they did, the responsibility, as was mentioned by Kirsten, would be for the group home supervisor to call the police as required by law, to let them know that a child is missing from their property. And so it was a burden both on our Sheriff's Department, our city police, as well as others who are functioning in this responsibility. So again, I'm sure my colleagues have some questions, some thoughts. So I will start with Commissioner Tverslos. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mantovich, thank you for your comments. Thank you for being here this evening. Ms. French, thank you for your leadership and all of the work. I know this conversation, as mentioned, has been ongoing for quite some time. This has been a pain point for me particularly, in hearing the number of concerns from residents as well as operators and owners of the, the various facilities. As mentioned, I live in a neighborhood where we have probably about four or five alone on my block. So this is something that is very important and vital into our community as it relates to the quality of life and also providing the needs and services that many of the various different categories outline. So I just really would like to pick up on where Mr. Mantovich left off, if you will. A couple of questions. His questions were right on point in terms of like the, the 100, the 100-foot separation.
Thousand foot.
Thousand. Thank you. Thank you. And I'm looking zero after zero. Thank you. The thousand foot, yeah, 100 foot, that would be nice. The thousand-foot separation between the next facility. So could you speak to that?
Yeah. I, I'd like to go over kind of how those, that line of questioning was laid out. So first, right now, we just have the residential facility definition, generally speaking. We also have, we've got a support, an adult supportive living category as well. We haven't changed anything where something has, is currently a conditional use and now will become permitted. Nothing has become more permissive within this draft. So that's, that's first of all. Second, we, we did split the treatment of
of all. Second, we did split the treatment of foster care group homes versus these other categories in trying to keep in concert with fair housing. 1,000 feet, this is, this is a contentious point. We've heard, we've heard comments that that's too much. It's about a block and a half, or can be a little bit wider, depending on your block. Some city blocks are about 300 feet, some are 500. So one, you know, if you're in a small neighborhood like mine, Mount Vernon, you're going to end up with maybe two or three homes total that can possibly be opened of any category of group home within the entire neighborhood. And then, of course, we have some denser neighborhoods where that, you might not register that. But the reason we chose 1,000 feet is, one, is administratively understandable to everyone. It's mapped over a geography that people can kind of get the sense of that scale. And also, we don't want to see inundation, and what we, what you get when you start to space things out is a carrying capacity for the city as a whole. You can only fit so many points on a map if you are putting 1,000-foot separations between them, and that means our service providers will not be inundated in the future like they are right now. So we are not creating some new category of use that we are saying, and now you're welcome. And I wouldn't claim that these changes are not substantive. They are very substantive, and they're responding to a current issue. So these are not your run-of-the-mill, regular updates to the zoning code.
Okay. So, in my humble opinion, I think it needs to be even further. So my question is, because of the oversaturation that we currently have in many of our neighborhoods, so I know that there are thoughts that we're leading the charge. I don't know if that is in fact a fair statement or not, being that they are heavily concentrated in our area and southwest Ohio, particularly Montgomery County. So with that, what are some of the other neighboring municipalities doing? Like, what are some of the other cities, Columbus, Franklin County, whatever have you? What are they doing in terms of that separation?
Great question. So every geographic area in the state is facing a different level of interest in these homes. Some are facing concentration by sober living homes, and they have to deal with a different set of circumstances, a different set of laws that they have to follow. Some, like us, we are really the forefront on foster care group homes. I hesitate, in some sense, to extend spacing beyond what we can argue against a fair housing advocate who might say, is that arbitrary, and what data is that based on? We really need to keep a balanced approach on this, because we have other tools in the toolbox to prevent over-concentration besides just the spacing. So in your, in your context, if you have any, any homes, you say you have five, right, so you won't get any more. There won't be any more in your neighborhood. You won't, 1,000 feet away is quite distant. And I don't disagree that you could debate that maybe 1,500 is more appropriate, given our service level, and we could explore that for sure. The foster care getting the secondary cap, and also the inability of opening homes on blocks that have boarded properties, that does, that does quite a number on opening homes in inappropriate locations.
Okay. So, thank you for that. I appreciate it. I would just ask that we explore that.
Yeah.
We explore that. And then the other, the question that I have too is, to your point, right, we don't want to, we want to make sure that we're well, we're well within fair housing. So having that conversation with legal, fair housing, whatever have you, and looking at other municipalities in terms of that separation point between the various facilities that have been mentioned. And then I think it, my next question, it all plays into what Mr. Mantovich mentioned, and he's absolutely correct, right, in terms of oversight? Because we can say 1,000-foot separation, but what are the tools? And you mentioned toolbox, you mentioned the tools in our toolbox. What are some of those other tools? And then the other question to that, and please?
Oh, sure.
This is not a gotcha moment. I just want clarification. This is a moment of clarity. This is a moment for us all to be educated. This is a moment for us to address what we're seeing in our community, where there are a number of concerns. And I will add that there is a theme that we're seeing. And I really appreciate the level of detail that you provided with the heat maps and really showing the overlay and the concentration. And it is, in fact, a theme. There is a theme that we need to do more as it relates to addressing our poverty rate, right? The poverty, the number of vacant structures and blighted structures that we have in our community, and why they're so heavily saturated in northwest West Dayton. And we know that there are structural forces that go along with that, right? We know that there's disinvestment, redlining, segregation, the list goes on and on, and why they're in those areas. But what are we doing to combat that, and what are we doing to negate those, those issues of concern, and why it's so heavily concentrated in those areas in northwest West Dayton, right? So, I gave you a lot. So I pause there and just really ask that we look at, or if you could answer, like, what are the tools that you mentioned in our toolbox? And then what are we going to do in terms of enforcing that level of safeguards and oversight?
During the group home operator, providers meeting that we had last May in 2024, Mayor Memm's asked a really good question that just cut right to the heart of it. Why are you opening your home here in Dayton? And the answer we got from a provider was, because zoning lets us.
No, her words in particular. You got it right, but because you all allow us. Yep.
And I took that personally.
I did too, yes.
Yeah, right. Yeah, exactly. So we are currently lacking all the tools. So the tools that we are starting to, that we are considering that are in this draft, yes, we have the 1,000-foot separation, and the, you need to provide us all the information that you're providing to the state, and we're not going to allow you to open a home before that home is in tip-top shape. So maybe don't buy a home that's not in tip-top shape to start out with. We're going to look at the environmental surrounds. The foster care group homes are going to be completely unable to open in the northwest, or I'm sorry, north central and west geographies. So those, those are the new tools. As far as sober living homes go, and the other types of, and the DoDD homes, that 1,000-foot separation is more meaningful, I think, than it sounds like, because there are already so many homes. So all those points on the map, plus all the points on the map for existing sober living homes, space things out from where they are now. At some point, you will hit a carrying capacity where you almost can't find another space. We're not really pushing for that. There are still spaces in the city. We need to provide homes for, for all manners of people who need the support. But it's a, it's a decently powerful tool. And if your thoughts are, make it stronger, make it 1,500 feet, then we can do that exploration. There are people who are arguing that the 1,000 is too high. And so we're looking to back up what we are doing with the best data that we can, we can muster. We need to provide a good legal argument for what we're doing.
Okay. So when you say, thank you, so I know you mentioned like the exterior and doing that. So would that be on an ongoing basis? Will we have a continuation of those inspections? Like initially, we'll have the inspections, but to Mr. Mantovich's point, right, will that be ongoing? Is it quarterly? Is it every six months, whatever have you? What are, and how are we going to make sure that we enforce that? And then the other piece is, who's delegated with that responsibility, or who's, you know, designated, rather, designated, excuse me, with that responsibility of that oversight piece?
So group homes face oversight from several different angles, and we will be providing an inspection from the outset of the use of the home. The fire department also provides that. The licensing facility also provides that. As far as the ongoing operations, what we want to do is create in our office a pipeline for communications to the state agencies, so people can stop being confused about who is licensing that particular facility that they're thinking about. The state, with the foster care group home situation, has changed their code to, to get more clear on how somebody who is not in compliance would get shut down.
Okay.
The fact that we have tools and stand, I mean, they're just, they're tools, they're legal ordinances. If we have legal ordinances in place that say you have to operate in such and such a manner, and you are not operating in that manner now, we also have tools to shut something down that is out of compliance. So without any kind of set rules on how these things are supposed to work locally, we can't do much other than perhaps declaring a public nuisance, which is really hard when all you're doing is calling for police service for missing children, to say that's a public nuisance. But we, we have, we will have, because we've had to respond to this, we already have a better pipeline to the state for communications, and we will have our own suite of tools if we need them.
Okay. So is this our housing inspection team that will be performing these various different reviews or oversight, or inspections, I should say?
Not, not housing inspections, but zoning administration in particular.
Zoning administration. Okay. Okay, thank you. Let me see, my other questions. Oh, so, and you alluded to this during your presentation, the 12. So that has me in, yeah. So why, how did we get to the number 12?
Sure, sure. Yes. We cannot do, and I have to like caveat, we can't do perfect social science with moving numbers and targets in a living city, right? But, but where we came, where I came up with that original proposal, we played around with different geographic sizes. We thought this would be good, because it provides choice to the provider at this level using our larger land use geographies. And we backed into 12 based on the counties reporting the number of foster care children in the system on a daily basis. So we had that figure. We corrected for, well, what proportion of that figure do we guess is generated by Dayton, in particular, our city? And if we are assuming that there are five children in a house, okay, let's divide by five. And the number we came up with was about 50 tops, like at the maximum, with all the generosity we could possibly provide, you would need no more than 50 to serve our population, and we have far more than that. But they're concentrated in two of our geographies, and there's none over here. So we wanted to make sure we weren't just saying, okay, and now they're kept, and nobody gets to, there's no homes that will ever operate on the east side of Dayton, just on the west side. It seems like we're trying to make sure everything is equitable in that, in that sense. So the 12 comes from that very basic math of trying to figure out what, what are our needs, not the entire state's needs, at the maximum level. And we, there's room for debate, because that technique has its flaws. Yeah.
Yeah, because when you talk about equity, and you, again, you alluded to it in your presentation, the poverty rate and the number of blighted and vacant structures that we see in north, you know, the north central and west area of where this heavy concentration is. So, I mean, how is it in fact that that's screaming or supporting equity when those areas are heavy, heavily concentrated? Do you follow me?
I, I recognize that we're reacting to a situation that already has occurred.
Yeah.
So I think the technique that we're trying to employ is, look, we are already past that 12. You will get no more.
Right.
And that is kind of, at this point, without trampling property rights, the best that you can do.
Yeah. Okay. The, the question, again, was raised, and I think it's spot on, the notification. Because, again, I have the same thing personally. I don't, they're popping up everywhere. And understand that there are a number of responsible service providers who do this work because they genuinely care. They want to provide, you know, the access and the support to those who are in need, whether it is our youth group homes or sober living facility. I actually, you know, have one that is across, adjacent to me, in top-notch condition, no concerns whatsoever. So the question is, again, were we notified? No. We had no knowledge, no, no awareness whatsoever. So my, my question is, what is the level of awareness that will be provided to the residents once these facilities are in fact, you know, vetted, to be established?
Okay. So on the foster care group home side, since they will be conditional uses, anywhere where that is proposed, you would receive a notification within 250 feet of the property, a mailed notice, and then it would be posted on the city website. For the other categories of homes, which I understand, you know, we all are thinking about, I'm, I'm certainly open to doing further research, because I can understand the utility of this. They are supposed to be providing community engagement plans, and I would like to see that those get followed through on. And we can do, especially given tools that we have to, to, one, we're bulking up our staff a little bit, so that is helpful. But to manage the quality control at the outset of this, as far as fair housing goes and how you treat new homes coming through the system, if it's not a conditional use and you wouldn't notify something for a, for a family, it can be a little bit sticky to just notify that, hey, you have a, you have five developmentally disabled adults coming next to you. It becomes a sticking point for fair housing, for sure. At the same time, I think there are reasonable ways we can reach out in a positive way as well to new neighbors and, and notify organizations that new neighbors may be coming.
No, well said. I appreciate that. Thank you. I think that is maybe all of my questions. I want to make sure, so I won't go back or interrupt any other questions. I think, I believe that's all the questions that I have this, this evening. But I would just, for the record, like, want to uplift the work that you and the staff have done. I know this has been something that has been very tedious, and a lot of manpower hours have gone into this, a lot of vetting and research, and I really do appreciate it, that you all are taking the time and the thought, and being very diligent about how we address this concern, but all the while, providing this level of support and service. So my only recommendation at this time is that we go back and we do the additional vetting and recommend, and research that is needed, particularly as it relates to those areas of contention and those areas of concern for the, the 1,000-foot separation. I would also like to see something into play for notification, whether it's in a CBA or some type of community engagement piece that goes along with the facility. I would also like to see something for the continuation of the oversight and seeing what and how that moves.
Continued inspections.
Exactly. Thank you. So those are just some of the areas of concern. But great work. Thank you very much. And again, I want to see what other neighboring municipalities are doing.
Thank you. I think, I think all of those things are very valid. The nuances of this whole thing are, it's, it is incredibly complicated. You run into a barrier over here, and you have to edge this way. I think what we should do is, is provide some kind of a comparison table, show what other communities are doing, and make sure that if, what the instruction is, is we want to, you know, keep our quality high and make sure we are not inundated. What is the maximum level we can approach? Get some legal review on that. I would just encourage, you know, the idea that this could be iterative, because we have, you know, we've got communities that are going to take our model, and then they're going to innovate on it, and we're going to say, oh, I wish we had done it that way, too. So we will probably come back with amendments in the future, as we see that kind of evolution.
Yeah, absolutely. But I think for now, we do need to make those, the ones that we do know, we need to get it right, because I don't want us to get into the habit of, we'll come back, we'll come back.
Oh, sure.
And we don't. And then, you know, it has now way beyond our scope in terms of what we need to do and how we need to address those, those issues. So, but again, great work. Thank you for being receptive, and thank you for providing that level of detail. I really appreciate the map and the comparison. So.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you.
Your Honor, if I may.
Sir.
The issue with sending it back puts us back to May 2024.
Well, we got it.
We have to start the whole thing over again.
No, not necessarily.
Plan board review.
We would end up before plan board again. But the, I think, whatever you want to do, keep in mind, we have a moratorium, I believe, until
Exactly.
January, late January is where that extension was landing. So we just, we, we need the action to either take place under a moratorium, or we have nothing. You know what I mean? So it's, just bear that in mind.
Mr. French.
Thank you, and thank you for helping us understand that complexity between our zoning code, the Ohio revised code, and fair housing. I was curious- I was curious, because there's some residents who have a belief that at one time, like the sober living homes were conditional use and that it was noticed and had to be approved. I'm curious if that, if anyone has recollection, whether that was the case and whether we were outside of, and my guess is we were probably outside of fair housing at that point.
I just don't, I just don't know that that was ever the case. I do remember there was a, a kind of a provision in the zoning code that said a supportive living, under the minor variance provision, so administrative action where you could swap out or say that a supportive living home is the same as any family. But then no standards were provided to do that analysis or, and no notice would have been provided or anything like that. So it, it didn't seem all that comprehensible to me, what you do when somebody says, I want to be a supportive living home, you just issue the permit?
Can I add to that?
Please.
Yeah.
Tony Kroger, Planning Division Manager. I think what some people may be thinking about with notice are the larger facilities, which could have been called things like transitional or emergency. Those were certainly either rezonant or variances or conditional uses and notice would have been for those, but for the smaller ones, like five or fewer, there was never notice for that.
Okay, thank you. Very helpful. I was curious why we haven't done similar, can you tell me why the supportive care group homes aren't treated in a parallel fashion as the foster group homes?
In terms of the, having a cap for.
Having a cap. And also, I was curious, you know, you didn't present a map of how many of those there are and what land use areas and.
Right.
I'm curious, you know, are there places where there's more than 12 of those and are there places where, I'm just curious what the number is and.
No, that's a, these are really good questions, all things that spun through our brains as we were trying to come up with something sensible. So the data shows that there's not really any concentration anywhere. There is a distribution of supported living homes. How I backed into a number for foster care had at least some amount of data behind it, plus just the general knowledge that we are already well over that. So we don't have to worry too much about the precision. With sober living homes, I, we'd have to, we'd have to really think and study what is the, what are the needs? What number do we need to have before we say, and that's the cap?
Sure.
Because we don't want to, we don't want to shortchange anyone. Very protected under fair housing as, you know, for populations that have disabilities, you're considered disabled. So we have to, we have to justify what we're doing. That said, that research can be done. And I think that if we find that for foster care, it seems like a very sensible format, I think it would be very easy and helpful actually for providers as a communications tool rather than just the thousand foot separation because you would be able to say, look, we're full. That's, it's so simple and you just don't look in that neighborhood anymore. Don't call me for like every house that you come up with. Did that answer your whole question?
Yeah. I would like us to do that work.
Sure.
I just want to say that, just because I think you said, some communities are dealing with an oversaturation of sober living communities. You can imagine, given the reasons people opened up foster group homes in Dayton, could be the same reasons they might want to open, open some of the supportive care group homes and want to make sure that we have done the work so we know that we know what we need for our community.
Yes.
To care for our neighbors, but not create a space that's attractive to overtax, I mean, we're putting the human service levy on.
Right.
We're overtaxing our services by having an oversaturation.
Thank you.
Could you provide us with the tools that the state has to provide oversight for the group homes, the foster group homes?
Yes. I, I absolutely can. I think we have a great relationship with DUIS at this point and we are working on who is our main point of contact all the time for the other two service providers, but there are portals to submit complaints at the very basic level. If there is a real, real concern, we definitely encourage you to reach out to our office because we at least know what the ORC says and we, we can filter the complaint into what it, what it really ought to say to get somebody's attention. But yes, I think, I think we are still kind of working on that relationship and we, we will continue to do so to make sure that if something rises to the level that they're, it's not just sitting there. Something, that is, something is being done both on the state and local level.
I'd be interested to see if we have some parameters that we have in terms of what makes a good provider, and I'd like to match those with what the state requires of our, of these providers, because I think there's some issues that aren't captured in our data currently that could help us understand that, quite frankly, these young people are at risk in a lot of multiple ways.
Oh, sure. Yeah, we are very interested in, in making that loud and clear for the state, because sometimes I think the very common sense things that need to be addressed are just not being addressed by state officials who don't necessarily live here or really understand the challenges of some of our neighborhoods.
Yeah, thank you. And I think of our partners at DPS and, you know, the impact this has on our school systems with these children with no, basically no supervision. I mean, the report is, you know, if the school wants to talk with someone, they're trying to talk to a social worker in another county who's not returning their calls.
Right.
So these kids are just not getting the care that they need.
The, the one thing that we really took away from yesterday's session at MVRPC was what our neighboring jurisdictions, both Trotwood and Harrison Township are doing. They have a, they, you know, we are inundated, we are taxed for service as well, but we would like to explore how to build relationships with the existing homes. They've, they've had a very good amount of success with preventative, providing resources and a personal service from police and we have a mediation response, but just making, making more, basically more channels before you get into the formal pipeline of having to call for a missing person. How do we prevent the person from running away in the first place, which can be successful as, as their data has shown.
Great, thank you. And I appreciate you wanting to look at what other municipalities have. I think that really actually doing that analysis will help us around the fair housing argument because if we can look at communities that are more restrictive and seeing what they're doing.
Yes.
And then thinking about where we fall in that spectrum of permissiveness and restrictive, it also could help us make some arguments that some communities are outside of fair housing and we're carrying the burden because they are out of fair housing law.
Certainly.
Yeah.
I would like us to consider moving the notice for the group homes. It seems like there, there is a notice process for the foster group homes.
In this draft, yes.
Out to 1,000 feet. I mean, if, if you can put one every 1,000 feet, it seems like the residents within that scope should be noticed. So that would be a recommendation. And then finally, I think we mentioned emergency housing, protective care facilities and transitional housing. Those three items are named and excluded in this zoning code. Are they cared for in another way and are these conditional uses?
Transitional housing is only allowed in the downtown districts by conditional use. Protective care is the same, they're treated the exact same. And so you, if you're finding a house in a neighborhood, you, you have a public process to go through at minimum and, and an uphill battle for sure. And those are higher level behavioral health. But in, in one case, they're called a residential facility by OMS's definitions, the class one facilities under ours are protective care. You're allowed to use restraint and you're, you have, you know, higher challenges with the, the people you're serving. So there's a higher, higher standard within our code already, thank goodness, but we needed to provide some clarification because there's no way to know that right now, that a residential facility under the ORC would not just be a residential facility in our code. It's protective care, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Those are my questions.
Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, and thank you for all the questions. It's clear to me that this is a very complex issue. Equally clear to me that you are an expert.
Not intending to be.
She became an expert.
Well, became an expert, sure. You know, we've been working on this for some time and, and, you know, this density of these group homes is really problematic in our community. And, you know, there are a variety of reasons for that. A lot of that has to do with the advanced social services that we ride in this county. So we become attractive and the property values are relatively low versus Columbus or Cincinnati or some, some others. So these are the reasons why, some of these are the reasons why folks decide to open these things. And, and, you know, there are good group homes and, and bad group homes, but we have to really deal with this density issue, which is why I feel that there is a sense of urgency here. So, you know, I respect the work that the planning board has put into this. Again, it's very complex. And, you know, I just want to be clear, there are going to be opportunities. If we want to amend this sometime down the road, we can do that. There's nothing stopping us. As with many of these things that we put forward, they're, they're living documents. They're, they're things that we can, if they're best practices that come up that arise from other counties that, that look at us as the model, and they do. I've heard that all over the state. So, yeah, I think it's just really important that we put something in place that kind of breaks up this, this issue of us being attractive to, to businesses, frankly, that are coming to this city and, and causing problems, frankly. So I would like to move forward on this. I appreciate you for centering Dayton's issue. I mean, there are a variety of issues that are surrounding communities also, but your job is to center Dayton's health in that space. I'm glad that you are doing that and made those, that statement. So that's really all I had, but I would like to.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Joseph.
Thank you. I want to echo Commissioner's comments. You've done a great job and it's a lot of questions and it's a complex topic. So thank you to you and thank you to your colleagues who've done a good job.
Thank you.
The, the question I have is actually a little bit bigger picture, and that is, how are we measuring the success of this? I mean, are there measures looking at, like you mentioned, calls for missing persons? Are there other measures that we're going to look at that would give us an indication that we need to do more later on or less or whatever, adjust?
That's a great question. I think we are going to live a little bit in the counterfactual of, did the homes double after this? No, we know that. So if the stasis of doing nothing, we would expect to be, to continue to be absolutely flooded. We would have had no tools to say no to an application. So we know that if, if the, if the applications themselves slow down too, and we've gained a little bit of a reputation of having standards that you have to comply with, because that was really some of our issues, we gain this reputation of having nothing that could provide any resistance or I don't have to clean up my property first, right? So we want to see some response to that in our operations. As far as the calls for service go, I do think that's that, after the, after the home is open, what other soft approaches can we use to reach out and, and talk on a personal level with the people who are living in homes and need help, especially the youth, because that, that's where you're getting the missing persons reports. And that you can, the police keeps very meticulous data on those calls for service. They have it all very categorized. They're able to pull that data for us anytime. I do think that is a huge measure. On, on the other hand, with, with some data we're hearing from Cincinnati is they're calling us to see what, what we're doing. Their calls for applications have tripled since we started our moratorium. So we're going to see a lot of ebb and flow in our region on this topic. I, I do expect that we're going to circle back around as other jurisdictions are reformulating their codes, because this is kind of a current issue that we just happened to get hit with over the past few years.
That makes sense. I appreciate that. And if I can make a suggestion too.
Sure.
If you could, since you are connected to everyone in this field right now, especially regionally, if there's a way that we could talk to other service providers outside of police to get a feel for what their data is as we go forward, because I think it would be useful to have other opinions, just so we're able to see from their point of view how it's going for them. Because I think, like Commissioner said, that the concentration of homes, especially serving youth, has really put a, it's, it's hard for, for our county agencies and our agencies and even private agencies to cope with that. So I'd like to have that in, in, in data, if we could somehow over the next year or two or three or whatever, however.
I agree. I think we do have some partnerships brewing that will be a conduit for that.
Awesome. And I have a question for Mr. Parlet, if I could.
Sure.
You mentioned that it's urgent that we do it now. Could we put a moratorium, like extend the moratorium to give these folks a chance to rework some things or is it better? Oops, just broke my pen. It's a very exciting question, I guess. Is it, I just want to try to get the pros and cons for moving ahead tonight versus keep the moratorium in place longer.
Yes. As Kirsten mentioned, we extended the moratorium twice now, right?
Sure.
So we could do that again. But to Kirsten's points, we have nothing now. This would give us something. Then we can, you know, begin those conversations, address some of the things that perhaps weren't addressed with this, but this is a big, big problem. I, we've, we've gained ground with the state and, and the relationship and how they, they manage these programs. So I've seen, just last week, there was a kid from Athens County that was picked up by the police, committing crime. So yes, granted, we do have a moratorium until, I guess that would be February.
Oh, is it February? Pardon me, yeah.
It was extended six months in August, so around February. Our preference and recommendation would be to do this now and start the rest of that work that we've heard of being concerning tonight.
I would, I would say that I could support that. I think that's okay, but I would do it with the condition that we have a list of things that we are considering. Commissioner brought up some things, Commissioner Manvich brought up some things, Commissioner also with sort of expanding the look at.
You know, I've got some things.
So there are some good suggestions here. I'd say if you could come back to us, Mr. Parlet, with some, some of those and our, our progress toward that. And I'd also like to see these measurements, if I could, sort of codified and as of what, how we're going to measure going forward and to make sure we have a real feel for how, what's happening.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So following on those, the same line, some of the concerns that I've been able to discuss with other mayors and other cities about this whole issue would be, again, we have a situation here in Dayton that's exacerbated, of course, by the number that we have, which caused us to cause this action in the first place. So looking at when the situation that we have, when they have a caseworker or leader in that space that is from another county, that the kid is from, let's say Calhoga County, for example, and the time for that person to get here, if there's a situation that needs to have them here to address the needs of that young person, is sometimes way too long. And the aspect of having someone here, for example, in almost like a substitute role in this county, in this city, that could take care of some of those responsibilities in the absence of a caseworker that may be assigned to that particular person. That's one of the things that we talked about and having that explored as well. Additionally, because we have so many of the community's resources, including support for the schools, as was mentioned, recreational opportunities and things of that particular nature, dealing with their medical records and other concerns that they have, to have another adjustment, if you will, in terms of the resources that would be earmarked specifically for some of those services. And whether or not the state puts in some additional money or whether they modify the existing pot of resources that they have to make sure that we can have those needs addressed with those young people.
So I think one thing to keep in mind with the state's revision, which I don't think we're all satisfied with, there's, there's more to do, but the state's revision to their code pertaining to Department of Youth Foster Care Group Homes, they are dividing the state and basically they have a mandate to, as the administrators now, divide the state into regions and not transfer children throughout those regions. So don't cross those lines. They're still drawing those lines, so I can imagine they're, they are still doing.
Right.
You know, people are moving around. So that, that will provide assistance. I'm interested to see if that changes the dynamics of the market, so to speak. If their supply of people is not from here to begin with and that reduces because you can't cross these lines, does that change how many homes are able to support themselves with our local area children? I don't know. It's something to watch.
Yep. And we do know we have at least one organization that does recruiting and support for those individuals who are trying to start group homes here in Montgomery County. And that's not necessarily bad, but it's not necessarily good as well, because we do have young people who have needs and that's the reason why they're here in the group homes in the first place. And I know listening to some of the group home owners and supervisors when they came here to tell us about the good things about having group homes. But as we talked about before, you can have sometimes too much of a good thing. But as we talked about before, you can have sometimes too much of a good thing, especially if they're concentrated in such a, uh, a dense area within the city of Dayton and causes those individuals who live in those neighborhoods. As was mentioned earlier a couple of times, it causes problems for that family.
Sure.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, I'd like to close the public hearing. Commissioners, uh, what's your, what's your choice?
Let the record show that I am recommending for the, um, the case to be, um, for additional, reprimanded back to the plan board for additional review, as noted from the, the questions and the suggestions from Commissioner Fairchild as well as Commissioner Joseph and myself for the additional work to be done, as while it is under the moratorium. We have until February 2026. There's no urgency for us to pass this right now in terms of moving it forward. So, just let the record show that. Thank you.
Okay. Everything we do, the record shows that. We have the minutes. Okay.
Let the record show that I would like to move forward with the planning board recommendations.
Yeah, I'm good. I'd prefer to refer this back because I think what was really clear is that we have more homes than we need for our own kids. And as soon as the moratorium comes up, we've created a pathway for more homes to be added to our city to tax more of our service, to tax more of our DPS, and it'll just encourage, and we give them the pathway so the other land use, um, areas will quickly go to 12. And I don't know that we'd have a, a tool to prevent that from happening. So, I think, um, I think we're premature. We've got the moratorium. I think we've got to find a way. I'm, I'm curious if it's legal to have a, a cap for the whole city. I mean, you told us like 48, 50 is what we would need for our own, um, youth. It seems like that's a reasonable thing to consider, is having an overall cap.
Excuse me. Mr. Parlette, um, you've mentioned some things, excuse me for a second, you've mentioned some things in terms of where we are if we move forward with this, if we still have the opportunity to continue to work on this process, but not wanting to stop where we are at this point in time?
Correct. Um, because any changes we make, we have to go back to the, the groups that we talked to the first time. Then we have to go back to plan board, you know, once we have those conversations. So, all of that outreach that we did, have been doing, essentially we'll have to do it again to tell them what we've changed.
Okay.
So, we can do that down the road, but staff's got some work to do on these, we acknowledge that, that we've got some work to do on these issues that you've raised. We would just prefer the opportunity to get this done, then begin that work.
Okay.
I would just say in, in acknowledgement of the Commissioner's concerns, if we could keep a close eye on how things are going, we can always reinstitute the, the moratorium.
Moratorium.
Yeah.
Really quickly, if I may.
Go ahead.
Mr. Parlette. So, what this does, it sets boundaries, um, so that it, we have very, we don't have any tools really to, to, uh, close group homes or determine if, if new ones will come in other than these boundaries that are set up, the thousand foot boundary, other things where there's density already, that, that's going to be there. What we're trying to avoid is more coming in. And I think this, these recommendations will go toward that. Are they perfect? No, I don't, I don't think they're perfect. But again, I think it's a living document and then when we see better practices, we can always adopt them and move forward. My expectation is, would be that we would do just that. Furthermore, we've got our lobbyists, we've got the state delegation all kind of unified in this, realizing that this is a, a bad problem for our community. And they're working on, uh, ways to change the mindset of, of the state legislature and maybe provide us even greater tools. Maybe even be able to close down some of the ones that are here that are bad actors. So, there's an opportunity here, but I think that I don't want to miss this opportunities to set boundaries right now so that we don't get more group homes.
But Commissioner Shaw, I think what we, what we're really doing is creating a pathway, we're creating a pathway to more. I mean, we currently have, how many do we have in the northeast?
Seventy-eight. We have seventy-eight total.
That, that's in the county, I think.
Yeah. There's thirty-seven in north central.
Yes.
Thirty-seven in north central, twenty-one in southeast. So, that's fifty-eight. Whatever the number is in northeast.
In southwest?
Southwest is twenty-one, I believe.
Okay. Excuse me, Christian. Excuse me, Commissioner. Christian, would you come forth?
Yeah.
Share those numbers with us again.
Yeah. Let me just flip us back to this map here. Um, so these are our current numbers for foster care.
Screens.
The screen's not.
Oh, the screen's not. Thirty-seven.
Just tell us what they are. Just tell us what they are.
Thirty-seven north central, we've got four in the northeast, we have zero in downtown and southeast, and we have twenty-one in the west geography.
It seems to me we're just creating a pathway for twenty new homes, eight in northeast.
I, I certainly have no qualms about exploring the legal topic of can you have a, a cap overall? It, that's completely feasible. I think we, there was, there were certain reasons optics wise of like, do we freeze it in place where everybody is in west and north central Dayton? Thought about that and we thought, well, maybe we will spread out geographically. We thought about, uh, transfer, like a program where you would transfer licenses so we could sort of spread out. That seems a little untenable for our staffing levels, but of course, it's, it's worth exploring.
I just think the overabundance we have creating a pathway for more to come doesn't make sense.
Okay. I don't think this doesn't necessarily do that, correct?
Uh, I can understand the, it, there is a possibility that you would have, of course, more foster care group homes if you are not capped in that land use geography. You just would need to find a home that is at least a thousand foot, feet away from another home.
Right. If we go forward with these recommendations.
If you go forward and lift the moratorium, you could have more foster care.
But going forward, excuse me.
Excuse me, Commissioner. Go ahead.
Yes, may I? Thank you. But going forward, we lift the moratorium, so we will entertain. If we go, if we move forward as it is, it creates that ambiguity and it also to Commissioner's, uh, Fairchild's point, it provides that avenue for those additional facilities to take place in those other areas where we're not seeing that concentration.
Is that your assessment?
It, it, if a, yeah, if a, if an application comes in for the southeast land use geography that has zero and they are a thousand feet away and there are no, uh, you know, boarded homes, then yes, we would issue the permit. So, these are policy decisions and, and we're happy to consider anything.
Yeah. The, the primary issue with doing.
Yeah.
Sorry, Your Honor. Uh, the primary issue with doing it this way is any air, land use area that has more than twelve will get down to twelve over time in attrition, right? A group home would close. So, it, it's going to take time to get down to twelve from thirty-seven or forty-seven. Um, so that, that's the issue. It would level out at sixty at some point.
Uh, correct. It would level out, yeah, to, um, forty-eight and.
Forty-eight.
Although, uh, you, you're not wrong. I'm not trying to say, you know what I mean? I, I don't mean to like bait and switch or anything. You are, you're right, there would be a potential new home or new homes open in that area. And if, if you want us to consider something further than that, then I can see the utility in that, given that we have service providers all over the city. So, you might, you might get concurrence from our emergency services who don't want to see even one more home in the city because we're already oversaturated citywide. Um, and I would just say that this is, this kind of policymaking is very different for a zoning code. This is like, we usually think in terms of zones and that's how we ended up in a situation like this. So, we, we don't usually make blanket cap state, statements like this, but maybe in our case, we need to explore those things. And I don't mind doing it as an iterative process. I don't mind doing it right now. Just let me know your preferences.
So, let me.
Do it, Commissioner Shaw.
Just hear, hear that then. So, if it's capped at twelve per neighborhood, then there would be no opportunity to have more group homes in that particular neighborhood if there are already more than twelve.
In that particular neighborhood.
Right. So, I mean, the only, the only thing that we're talking about is the equity issue in that there would be a distribution and an opportunity for more in areas where they have none, for instance.
Sure. Right.
Is that right?
That is, yeah. You would be able to have more homes in the northeast, downtown and southeast.
So, in the areas where we have the most, the biggest problem, there's still not, there will not be an opportunity for that number to grow.
No.
Correct. You're absolutely correct. Yes.
Yeah. This issue, yeah. What's the, um, one question first. What's, what's the rate of any closure of group homes?
I, I don't have that figure. I do know that some that have gotten zoning permits have not, uh, opened, and I do know that the state has been starting to get really restrictive on the homes that they're opening in our area generally because they, they don't, they didn't, I think they said, oops, I didn't realize we were flooding your system and, and we are now. Um, maybe, maybe just a counterpoint to consider about the overall, um, overall kind of governance of the entire city under the same number. It's just that we have a, a different school district in the northeast that, that children might be going to. I have had a proposal from an applicant who's been waiting very patiently under this moratorium to build a new house for a foster care group home where they're not currently oversaturated in, in these terms and this kind of policy overlay. It's just, just a counterpoint that, um, not all, not all group homes necessarily contribute to the problem and not all group homes are used in the same school district. So, it's, it was a consideration on why we divided instead of doing an overall number. It's just a lot to think about.
But there are no more, if we follow through and, and adopt this, there are no more that would go into those areas that are already saturated?
Correct.
But you can imagine that twelve.
Excuse me, Commissioner Fairchild. Hold on a second. Okay. Mr. Joseph.
Actually, I want to hear what Commissioner Fairchild was going to.
Okay.
Go ahead, please.
Yep.
That's all right.
I've said a lot.
No, go ahead.
Well, I'm just thinking about our Ziny Avenue over around, um, East End Community Center. That's going to become the prime location. I, I assume that we will max out. I don't know how many thousand foot spaces we can have to find those homes.
Springfield.
Yep.
I, there are, there are quite a few. I, I wish I had, uh, I really want to brush up the Omas data I, I received before presenting it, but, um, there are already many sober living homes on the east side of Dayton and so you'd have to spread yourself out from those homes. Um, yeah.
Yeah. I know that the challenge is trying not to be anti-group homes.
Right.
And also at the same time, trying not to saturate our communities further with additional group homes, which we already discussed all those challenges that we are experiencing when those things happen. Commissioner Joseph.
I do, and that is actually a technical question and my colleagues may already know this, but the thousand foot barrier, uh, does that, uh, you have to be a thousand feet from any of these categories of homes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes. Any category to any other category is how our code, our draft is written.
So, this would prevent the density that we have been experiencing with this first wave?
Yes, it would. Yes, it would. And I, I have to say, when we went to plan board, the, the feedback was similar. Uh, we want you to consider the most restrictive option because we are already inundated is the feeling. Um, so I can, I can definitely appreciate that sentiment and certainly can go either way on, on how to formulate a change to this draft if that's what's desired. I, but I do want to explore that legal topic. I want to present those, those questions to our legal team.
Sure.
Get those answers and then come back with feedback on that.
Mayor.
So, the moratorium was.
Yes, sir. Oh, yeah. Commissioner Fairchild?
No, I was just curious. I mean, we don't have that data on the, um, supportive care group homes.
Right.
And so, that could be.
I do know that we have very few DODD homes within our city jurisdiction limits and plenty, for some reason, right outside our jurisdiction limits. Um, and then we have a, we have a lot of, of Omas homes, class two facilities in, in the city, and they weren't always necessarily notifying zoning or asking for zoning permits. So, we have kind of caught up to that situation ourselves as we've gone on.
If I could, Commissioner Joseph. We, we have a moratorium in place now until still February. I think that gives us a sufficient runway to work through some of these issues before the moratorium comes off. So, uh, if, I think we can safely probably move forward to tonight with the understanding that we're going to work through these issues, you're going to look into the legal issues. I have a couple more questions, I think, and I know my colleagues do too, that we, we have time here. Uh, so I, I think I, I support moving forward with this, so it sets a baseline, uh, sends a message to those, uh, the folks at the state who we're working with, uh, that we need further help and further regulation, but we're starting with some common sense regulation here. Uh, sends a message to those who would apply here. Like you said, we're going to see what the, what effect that has. So, we'll see, we'll know in the next few months what that looks like. But as long as the moratorium's in place and we're working through these issues now, I, I support going forward.
I think the ask from us, from administration is just to consider, uh, whatever the moratorium date ends, that it is extended just a few months after the passage of any ordinance so we can prepare for everything that's going to happen.
We can extend.
Yeah.
If we need to.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, the will, Commissioner Trenaslaw, you have a question?
I do, yes.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
I'm just to make sure that I'm following. So, once the legislation is in, and I think you may have touched on this already, but, and I may have missed it, but once this legislation is in fact passed, will the moratorium be lifted?
Not automatically. You'll have to do a separate action.
It won't be until February.
It'll be February or until you've, you've decided.
We can extend it again.
Yeah, you'd have to extend it as well.
Okay.
Okay. So, Commissioners, what's your will?
Let's move ahead.
Move forward?
Move ahead.
Okay. All right, we'll move forward.
Thank you.
Sorry, we took so much time with this, but this is a very important issue for us and the community.
Been working on it since May.
And so, we took the time that we need to take. All right. Thank you so much.
So, again, excuse me.
Question.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Trenaslaw?
Um, so when will we receive the information that has been requested? So, we have, we have, the three have decided to move forward. So, then when will we receive all of their requested information? What is the follow-up? From the matrix, from the, the review, from legal? I need to get some definitive answers as to what the next steps are and what, um, what information will follow from that, from those next steps and bringing it before this body.
I think reasonably we would need about two months at minimum because we're, what we're going to do is do some staff research on, on other jurisdictions. We'd be calling up other jurisdictions to verify that our interpretations of what we're reading are correct. I think we may get assistance from the planning division. They've done that work for us in zoning before, gathering data. And then we need to do the legal review of, of those suggestions.
So, my only concern is that if in fact, let's say that it, it again will add a level of confusion. Let's say that we are able to extend it outside of the a thousand feet and then we go, and then now we have this, well, no, we said a thousand. Again, it's going to add a level of complexity, confusion. a level of complexity, confusion. And then the other concern is like if, in fact, it is legal for us to have a cap in place. Like, I just think that, not even think, I know that this is being pushed forward very prematurely, being that it has been noted from Mr. Parlet, as well as yourself, as well as the staff, as well as my colleagues, that there's some additional work that needs to be done. So I'll leave it there. And Mr. Kroger, I know you had something to mention on that.
Yeah, I was just gonna take a step back on the process here. So any changes that would ultimately happen to the current ordinance that's been advertised, anything that differs from it, as Mr. Parlet pointed out, has does have to go all the way back to the before even Plan Board. So you have to notice for Plan Board, have Plan Board, notice for City Commission, and of course, have time to do the research. And of course, there's, this is not an emergency, so we have 30 days after if it were to get to the second reading. So that all plays out timing-wise right now, where there would, while that research is being done, the moratorium is going through February, the ordinance, as is written now, would continue forward. And if it's determined in that interim, you know, between the the passage of the ordinance and the moratorium ending, that we really ought to reconsider something, then the moratorium would be extended and we'd start back at Plan Board.
Okay. We have to start that.
So we're critically on, all the mechanics are so strange. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, welcome. Okay, so we move forward. Ms. Blackshear, okay, thank you. So, we already closed the public hearing twice, so we can move forward. Ms. Blackshear, are there any citizens who are registered to speak?
Not for the public, well, the public hearing has-
Yeah, we didn't finish that.
I have legislation.
Okay.
Right.
I thought we passed that already. So legislation. Sorry, Blackshear.
The legislation implementing zoning case number PLN 2024-00184 will be ordinance number 32161-25. The ordinance will receive a first reading only. First reading ordinance number 32161-25, repealing, amending, and enacting various sections of the Revised Code of General Ordinances relating to the zoning code. And that concludes the legislation.
Okay. Now, Ms. Blackshear, comments from the citizens?
Yes, Your Honor, there are six citizens who have registered to speak, and I would like to remind everyone of the three-minute time limit. I call to the podium Kathleen
Kathleen Galt, five, I forgot my address. No, 5066 Safeway Drive, Dayton, Ohio, 45414. Good evening, everybody. I just gotta go. I can't believe all the information that you guys have to hold and retain and this incredible young woman with her body of knowledge. But anyway, so the arc of the moral universe is long and it bends towards justice. We know Martin Luther King said that a lot. Again, the arc of the moral universe is long, but it bends towards justice. So some of us in this room know the history of the closure of Good Sam, Premier announcing that, closing it and destroying it six or seven years ago. Some of us know the history of the Clergy Community Coalition, which I'm a member of, all of our efforts to try to save that from being closed and destroyed. The UN report we did, the federal complaint we did, the coming to the City Commission meetings and essentially begging for you guys to help us stop that closing and destruction. So now we come here to the ballot initiative, which we collected over 10,000 signatures to get it on the ballot, and here we are. So I wanted to say this, that many of the people that we talked to while we're collecting those 10,000 signatures firmly believed that the closing of Good Samaritan was racist and discriminatory, and that if Premier had announced that Miami Valley was going to be closed, that all hell would have been broken loose. I believe that. So here we are again, with the 10,000 signatures, early voting coming up. I'm encouraging the public to be part of that arc of justice and to really show up and vote for Issue Nine. We had 10,000 signatures. Just a slice of those people show up and vote for Issue Nine, you'll be part of bringing justice to that issue. So again, I'm encouraging all of you to vote for Issue Nine and for just a large percentage of those 10,000 signatures that we gathered to come out and vote for Issue Nine. So early voting starts soon, and I'm hoping people come and vote for Issue Nine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Yusuf Alzain, 4906 Amberwood Drive, Dayton, Ohio. I'm here tonight to uplift the spirits and the voices of many of my brothers and sisters in the immigrant community by telling my story. When I first came to this country as a student, I had a dream. Like many of my fellow immigrants, I had left behind a life in Lebanon, a home, a family, a culture that was deeply familiar. I came with a suitcase, a student visa, and a heart full of hope and fair share of fear. I knew I had to work hard to prove myself, to make a life here, not just for me, but for my family and for the dream that I had that had brought me here. The 45-year journey, it wasn't easy. I faced challenges I never expected, from navigating a new culture to learning a different way of life. But what I also found was a community. I found people who lifted me up, who saw my potential, and who helped me realize that my success was not an isolated achievement, but a collective one. Today, immigrants face a new set of challenges. Some are being illegally detained. Others are hearing messages that make us feel isolated and undervalued. It's easy to feel disheartened to question our place and our purpose here. We must not despair. We must not, we must hold our heads high and remember the truth of our own story and the undeniable story of our collective strength. The evidence is all around us, and it's backed by data. Immigrants are not a burden. We are the engine of this economy. Nationally, the numbers are astounding. In 2024, foreign-born individuals made 19.2% of the labor force. That's 33.4 million people. We are, we are more likely to start businesses and fill critical workforce gaps. We're not stealing jobs from anyone. The Cato Institute in 2022 concluded that on a national level, immigrants consumed 21% than native-born on a per capita basis across welfare and entitlements. We're not asking or begging for help. Our impact is deeply felt here in Dayton and Montgomery County. The 2019 study that you commissioned, the new Americans in Montgomery County showed that the immigrant population has been driving force of growth. Between 24 and 2019, the total of population in Montgomery County saw decrease. Our immigrant community grew over 21%. We have become a vital part of the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We are richer as a city because of diversity of culture.
Carson Brubaker.
Your name and address for the record.
What's that?
Name and address for the record.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Carson Brubaker, and I'm a local Realtor here in Dayton. I live at 1401 Pine Cross Drive. I spoke last meeting and asked for speed tables at specific locations on behalf of many concerned residents and homeowners in the area. I'd love to follow up with that matter today, but I'm here today representing some of my clients who are currently under contract to purchase a historically significant home at 802 Anderson Goodrich Court in Wright Dunbar Historic District. It is known as, in the historical archives of Dayton, as the Mallory House. So it was built in 1885 and designed by William Avery, a black architect during a time when such opportunities were rare. This home carries deep cultural and architectural importance. The original owners were the Boone family, followed by their grandson, Captain H. Mallory, a leader known for his relentless advocacy for Dayton's African-American community. This house is not just a property. It has vast historical significance. Since going under contract, we've discovered the extent of severe fire damage in the attic, requiring a full roof replacement. On top of that, all the interior components of the home need redone, plus some exterior as well. Tragically, the fire stripped the home of most of its interior original features. Despite that, my clients are fully committed to undertaking a historical revival, to restore what can be saved and respectfully recreate what was lost in a way that honors the home's legacy and significance to the neighborhood. Next to the property are vacant city-owned parcels. My clients have expressed interest in purchasing one or more of these lots to support their investment and help stabilize this important corner of the community. But they've been told, well, I've been told, because I asked on their behalf, that the land is not for sale. We learned that Sims, a well-known, highly respected developer in Dayton, previously tried to purchase the lots, and he was also denied. This suggests that it may be, the city may be intentionally holding on to these parcels, potentially in anticipation of rising property values in this up-and-coming neighborhood. So I ask, what are the city's actual plans for these lots? And is there a development strategy, or is this simply a long-term hold at the public's expense? While the city waits, taxpayers are footing the bill to maintain vacant land. Meanwhile, there are residents like my clients who are willing and ready to invest in the present and preserve the past. They aren't speculators. They're restoration-minded, community-focused individuals trying to do something meaningful, not just for themselves, but for Dayton. With that being said, they are willing to take on so much. The structural damage was a surprise.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. I'd love to follow up.
My name's Leslie Dworkin, and I live at 152 McClure Street, Dayton, 45403.
Evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak here this evening. I'm here to speak as the mother of a transgender son who I watch being targeted and discriminated against increasingly every day. This is very painful to witness. My son Ray is an adult now. He just graduated from college, beginning his adult life, and although I obviously don't live in his skin, I see and feel the constant attacks, lies, and blame being laid at his feet outside of anything he has done individually, just for being who he is. The most powerful leaders of our country are saying that my child is a terrorist, that his right to exist is a threat, that he needs to have his human rights stripped away. This is a relentlessly scary and debilitating environment to live in. This is my son's reality, and as a family, my husband and I share that reality with him. There are many in power who see my son as a threat to society. I see my son for the smart, creative, funny, and caring person he is. They see someone who should be denied health care. I know that the great gender-affirming care he received right here in Dayton saved his life. They see someone who's unnatural. I know that his existence is as real as yours and mine, and that people like him have always and will always exist. They see someone who is less than, weird, and expendable. I see a stellar human being. Dayton is a creative and forward-thinking city. There was a time when we led the nation in the number of patents per capita. I love that fact. The trans community desperately needs that kind of creativity and forward-thinking leadership from our politicians. This is a time of real crisis. There are other cities that have stepped up and shown both symbolic and tangible support for the trans community. We need our politicians to take action to protect the vulnerable trans community who are facing such ubiquitous and lethal attacks every day. I'm looking to you to assert your political power and to show the kind of leadership necessary to prove Dayton to be the progressive, pro-human rights city I've come to know. I'm looking to you to put words into action to make the safety and well-being of the trans community a priority. I'm looking to you to show some creative thinking, moral courage, and supportive leadership. There's only so much I can do for my kid by myself. Please support the Safe Haven Resolution. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Amy Morgan, 40 Green Street, Dayton, Ohio, 45402. I can remember that today. It is the end of the evening. Thank you, guys, for putting up with us this late. I appreciate it. I live in the Oregon District, in a very diverse and unusual community, I will say. Experiencing it in the last six years has been a pleasure. My brother lived in it in the 70s and the 80s, so I'm very familiar with the district, watched it change from something that no one would ever have thought had come to where it is now. The issue we are currently experiencing, I come in front of you to share, is the heavy drug usage and the homeless problem. Behind our houses, up behind 35, is a enormous homeless, and I use homeless loosely because these people are very well-bathed, very well-cared-for, more of a drug population, who is using it as a homeless residence. They are also peddling drugs on Patterson up and down the streets. We have reported it, the community, this homeless community repeatedly to both the police and the city. My bottom-line question is, you know, this is a community that is very involved in supporting everybody the Oregon District is, and we want to see it grow and be the star. I have friends who live outside the city and don't want to come down here because they see these people begging on the street or harassing people on the street, and this particular grouping has become quite aggressive. Living on Green Street, I experienced them last night, going out of their way to say something to me. Unfortunately, they get me, and as the neighbors will tell you, I'm the scariest person on the block. So with that, my question comes back to the city of Dayton. What are you doing to control this? And what can we do to get rid of this? Because all this is, at this point, is a opportunity for them to expand their drug usage up and down that street on green, to cause destruction, reduce property values, fire issues with this dryness. They're back there making fires. Quite a quality of individuals back there. Also, we see some prostitution going on. So I, that is all I really have. Bottom line, at some point, I would hope to hear back from the city that we're going to move them on to someplace else, find them a new home, or, and hopefully someplace where they can get the help they need to stop doing what they're doing, but not destroying our community. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Please make sure Ms. Jackson has your contact information.
That's Ms. Jackson, and I will also share.
Thank you.
Hi, all. My name is James Kavanaugh, 2232 North Main, 45405. I chose to, a 48-year-old man, invest in technology over paper, so my speech died. My cell phone ran out, but that was great. You know, this app, the Peace Initiative is phenomenal, and is interesting listening to the housing, the boarding home issue. But I'm here to talk about tables on East Fairview. As someone that lives in between Main and Riverside, I can tell you for a fact, it's a severe issue, and there are, and we'd like to, I mean, we've spoken, Carson spoke last week about putting some tables up, and we're just doing our due diligence to come back here on Theodore, East View, and Newport. I memorized those before my phone died. And I can also supply some more statistical analysis and anything, both quantitatively and qualitatively, that, you know, I, as a resident, have sat there and listened to any sort of the norse, but not just on East Fairview, but also on North Main. I can hear everybody drag racing and do whatever they can do on these streets. One more comment in that regards. I've also taken pictures of the four corners, and I had difficulty doing so at some point, simply because there's a lot of children, and I didn't want them to evolve in my, in my photographs, which then rearguses my point, that the last thing I'd like to see is any one of these kids and a lot of the other pedestrians that kind of walk and come and go in that area and get hit by someone who is in a hurry to go wherever they're needing to go. So you have my contact information on the sheet, I think. I would gladly follow up or talk to whoever in need to, at least on a civilian level, present any sort of data, any needs, and hopefully get something done to eliminate or reduce a lot of the speeding that's going on. Again, we're, this, I'm here today to focus on East Fairview, but I can also speak, since I'm on the corner of both, North Main and that area, it's, they're rip-roaring.
Okay. Thank you again for your comments. And Ms. Jackson, right there, again, make sure she has your information.
That concludes the speakers, Your Honor.
That's it?
That concludes the speakers.
Okay. Mr. Parlet, closing comments?
I actually have none, Your Honor. Thank you, though.
Okay. Ms. Blackshear, in closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay. Commissioners, Commissioner Trenaslaw, closing comments?
Yes, thank you. I would like to thank the presentations, the presenters, rather, for the presentations this evening. Mr. Dongal, thank you, as well as the entire staff for the work that you all are doing in the, the planning and neighborhood development department as it relates to the fire piles and demolition itself and the efforts that are being made there. And thank you to Ms. Sybil Martin in honoring the 15-year work of the Norman J. Ross Foundation in breast cancer awareness, and as well as Ms. Janelle Ross, in which she was, in fact, a recipient of the most recent Walk of Fame, Wright Dunbar Walk of Fame. Ms. French, thank you, as well to the, the zoning division of the Planning Department for the work that they're doing. I really appreciate the detailed presentation, and thank you, Commissioner, for offering the, the recommendation, the compromise, as well as Mr. Parlet for noting the concerns and making sure that we have a way forward on how we address those, those concerns that have been raised by not only the Plan Board, but myself and my colleagues, as well as Mr. Menovich. Thank you, sir, for being here and raising your concerns. My hope is that, since, in fact, it has moved forward, the legislation has, in fact, it will be moving forward, is that we will have a concrete assessment once the staff has had an opportunity to do some additional vetting and research, that we will receive something, and if we need to make any revisions to the legislation, we would do so collectively. So again, I welcome the, the recommendation and offering a way forward. I would also like to thank the number of the residents that came out this evening. Ms. Galt, thank you for your continued leadership and your advocacy work. Mr. Yusuf Alzain, thank you, and make mention of the importance of our diversity in our communities, as well as highlighting the, the means in which- communities, as well as highlighting the, the means in which our immigrant members in our community play and the overall quality of life and the diversity that we do have in the city of Dayton. And thank you for, again, your continued advocacy and your leadership. You wear a number of different hats and you always show up, so I just wanted to acknowledge you and uplift you for the work that you do in our communities. Ms. Carson Brubaker, thank you for being here as well, as well as Mr. James Kenevall. I believe I butchered that. Sorry about that. But your points are well-taken, and I do know, and Mr. Pilot, correct me if I have this incorrect, but this is something that the staff is, in fact, looking into. They're looking as to what traffic diets or speed tables that could be reviewed to address the concerns of the speeding and the honing on Theodore and East Fairview. And I know there's a list of other streets that go along with those concerns. So again, thank you for being here, and it is not being ignored, it's just a matter of the staff going through, making sure that they are able to provide a detailed level of assessment as to what, in fact, we can do, and it goes along with our traffic engineering as well as our planning department. So again, your, your concerns are not being ignored. And Leslie, thank you for being here on behalf of your, your son. I missed your last name and I apologize, but I appreciate you being here and advocating for the Safe Haven Resolution. And again, we are still working, actively working through that process and looking at what we currently have in place. Amy Morgan, thank you for your comments, and thank you for being here as well. So I think this is an opportunity for us, there's a lot of, a lot of work that's being done in regards to our unfortunate growing unhoused population. And if we could, Mr. Parlet, I think this is also an opportunity for us to, to have a healthy balance, where, not necessarily where there's a piece of enforcement, but that we're also making sure that those individuals have the level of support and services that are needed. So perhaps it's an opportunity for us to pull on the continuum of care and the partnership that we have with Montgomery County, to make sure, to Ms. Morgan's point, that those individuals have the, the services they need, whether it's assistance with alcohol, drug addiction, or services for supportive services in housing or employment, that we tap into the partnership that we have, not only with the continuum of care, but with MVHO. There we go. Miami Valley Housing Opportunity. All right. End of the day. End of the day. We're gonna get there. But again, we are fully aware of the number of encampments, and we're actively making sure that we are addressing those areas of concerns humanly, working with our partners that we're able to, to move forward. So I understand it is Patterson, so I can work with you offline so that we can talk more in detail about some various different things that we can do to address your concerns there. But I appreciate you coming out and staying late for this, this long but necessary and very informative meeting. And so with that, again, just wanted to highlight a couple of things. Ms. Reed, I failed to mention last week, the Culinary Creators offers a hands-on experience where kids will learn how to prepare food, practice kitchen techniques, and understand important safety tips. And it began last Wednesday, but it will go on until October 29th, and that is Wednesdays from 5:30 until 7:00 p.m. at Lowry Recreation Center, and is open to children ages eight to 12. So there are limited spots, but you can register at DaytonRec.com. So thank you, Ms. Reed, as well as the aquatics recreation programs. The recreation for session two of swim lessons is now open, $25 for six classes at Northwest and Lowry Recreation Center on Tuesdays, Fridays, and Saturday mornings. Lessons are available for all ages, from parents, child, to adult. And Leap Dance, our new youth dance program at Lowry is opening for registration, is open, rather, for registration for $25. Kids ages seven to 18 can build confidence, connection, and dance skills in a fun, supportive environment. And thank you, Ms. Reed, for providing this information. I really appreciate it. And I believe that's all I have. Thank you.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Fitchell.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank our staff who have gone home to get their rest, so glad they could get out here, but also the administration and my colleagues here for such a substantial deliberation on that issue around group homes. So I appreciate the level of discourse and the ability to model to others how public policy can be taken seriously and addressed in civil ways. So thank you. Also want to lift up some events that are coming on. There's a lot of opportunities this weekend to do meaningful things and build community within, within Dayton. Front Street on Friday night has their art hop. And then more interesting to me, on Saturday, for families at Front Street, they're having a Dayton Halloween Market from 1:00 to 4:00, so families can come and do free pumpkin painting and, and other activities around Halloween. There will also be the Global Dayton Root River Fest. This is the first time they're hosting this, a celebration of all the people in the, you got it? All right? Commissioner. You got it. You're rolling. But it's 1:00 to 7:00 at Triangle Park, and... Two weeks in a row, Commissioner. We should coordinate a little. We can divvy them up. Then co-op Dayton is celebrating their work and cooperative at the Yellow Cab, was it Yellow Cab?
Yeah.
From Tavern, thank you, from 3:00 to 7:00, with an event called Rooted Together, Rising Together. So a lot of opportunities to do things. I did want to remind folks that there's an election coming up on November 4th. As you know, we have the, the issue, the Human Service Levy that we've all supported. You must register on Monday, October 6th, and early voting begins before we meet again on Tuesday, October 7th. So I want to make sure, if you know people who aren't registered, to make sure they get registered. Mr. Alzain, thank you for being here and sharing your story. More importantly, thank you for all the contributions that you make to this community in terms of service to others, but also advocating for a more loving and just community. And I want to mention to Ms. Borkin, if I got the, was it?
Dworkin.
Dworkin, thank you. I couldn't quite get it. I did get an update. We expect to get a report or an update from our law department next Friday in our regular packets for next week's meeting. I don't know what that update will include, but know that this commission is attentive to the Safe Haven ordinance that came, and we're doing our work to see if we can move that forward. And then lastly, for our Jewish brothers and sisters, we wish you a meaningful yam kippur.
Okay. Commissioner Shaw, thank you.
I thought you stole my thunder on this one, but apparently there are two art hops in downtown Dayton. So the kickoff of the month with downtown Dayton's first Friday art hop on October 3rd from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m., a free evening of gallery openings, live music, art demos, and entertainment all throughout the Third and Main Street area. Also, the Food Equity Coalition is participating in the Great Apple Crunch this October by partnering with schools and early childcare centers to promote healthy eating and local food systems. To participate, register at go.Osu.edu/aplicrunch2025. And the only thing further that I have is I just want to wish my daughter a happy 21st, 24th birthday today. Gabrielle Kennedy Shaw, she's probably not going to see this. Either way, happy birthday, Gabrielle. That's it. Thanks.
Nothing here, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Man. Okay. So while you're on birthdays, so my son won't see this either, but today is his birthday. He's 55.
Okay.
So happy birthday to him. So just a couple of things. One, the, the mayor's fourth annual teen summit was very successful. We had more than 150 young people who came over to the Dayton Library from Dayton Public Schools, from DECA, from CJ, Horizon Academy, Miami Valley Schools, and from YLAC. We had breakfast and breakout, breakout sessions, as well as topics dealing with conflict mediation, of course, and student vision for, for Dayton, listening to them tell us what they thought their, their, their rights should include. Also, the Noier Rights Forums, conducted by our police and attorney to help young people understand what they should do when they're interacting with the policeman. Also, life lessons from sports and more. Had a great presentation from a keynote speaker, Mr. Norris Cole, professional basketball player. I think he's about ready to retire right now, but the young people were very excited about hearing his life pattern. He was a graduate of the course of Dunbar High School and a graduate of Cleveland State University up in Cleveland, and also has two championship rings with the Miami Heat. Additionally, the peace campaign is now underway. The city is looking for a community-based organization to host the Violence and Eruption Program. Applications are due on October, or by October 30th at 11:59 p.m. Okay? Mark that timeframe. Okay? Additional information on the webinar will proceed and be available for you online, going through the city. And on Thursday, October 2nd, at 11:00 a.m., we also have some additional information for you. And for more information, go to GDAHA, Great Dayton Hospital Association, their website, and you can learn more and more about what you need to move in that space to be eligible for filling out that the RFP. Again, it's G-D-A-H-A dot org slash community hyphen health backslash peace dash campaign dash violence dash reduction dash initiative. Okay? And also, I'd like to have Mr. Cameron Anderson come to the podium, please. It's our chance just to get a little bit of update. We're not going to ask you what you have been doing since Saturday, but I do want to announce that we are very happy to note that you got married this past Saturday. I see a ring on your finger. So is there anything you'd like to share with us before we leave this evening about your activities, or just how you felt being legal in that space?
No, it was, it was amazing. Overwhelmed with a lot of joy and love in the room. It was a great time, and just being back at work, getting back to it, so.
Okay. Is there anything you'd like to say to your wife on air, live?
How I wife, just make sure the food is in the microwave for me when I get home. I love you. She got food for me, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. So, okay, got you. Thanks a lot. So love and peace for all, hatred for none, with note for the business to come before this commission. I thank all of you for being here, and I thank all of you for your spirited contributions to our conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.